It's called a meeting to order, call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, April 27th to order at 5:05. And we have with us Lawson Wilson.
Here.
Okay, Jeff Young.
Here.
Marjorie Buck. He's not, she's muted.
Gonna make her co-host. Should be able to unmute.
Try to unmute yourself there.
Do you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, my stuff are good. CEO Jesse Dunbar, Recording Secretary Jan Sprague, I imagine she's somewhere here and.
I saw her name.
Okay, good. And Diane O'Connell, who is representing the Planning Board. Brett Witham hopefully will join us soon, but for now, we're gonna mark him absent. I don't see where we need to adjust the agenda. So let's go right on to approving the minutes for April 13th. And that involved our site visit, Greg, we were there. And I didn't see anything wrong with the minutes, anybody else?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I second that.
Marjorie, I think it's time for you to recuse yourself, sorry, I'll take a second from Lawson.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is seconded on the table, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you, okay. We'll open the public hearing, we'll call it to order at 5:07 PM. So, public hearing on Acadia Wilderness Lodge Campground. And I want to say a few things first. You know, this could be a little bit of a technological challenge for us, like I said, it's new ground, so please bear with us and and we're gonna go through the procedure here, but first, you know, I think it's not even, this is definitely the largest project that's ever come before the finding, certainly the most controversial one, at least since I've been around. We've received more than 100 letters in opposition and six or seven in support. And all those will enter into, be entered into the record. But reading through them, I found that some of the writers are unaware as to the Planning Board's responsibility. And I just want to set that straight a little bit, we are legally bound to consider an application on its merits under the standards in our ordinances, regardless of our own personal opinions on a project. And some of these letters stated concerns that while possibly valid, we have no control over them. As an example, several letters mentioned the traffic impact that this project would have in other towns. That may be true, but there's nothing in our ordinances to address that situation. So I just wanted to make people aware of that sort of thing. And we certainly are gonna consider this and properly, you know, we're taking it very seriously. And I'm gonna take a minute here to plug a couple of things before we go on with the public hearing and talk about the procedure for tonight. First of all, Tremont residents, voters, we have a town meeting coming up next week. And there are three articles concerning our ordinances on that warrant for the meeting. And one of them would strengthen the standards for our campgrounds. And wouldn't affect this project or any other projects that might be before us. They're minimal, you know, it's setback ordinance, a little larger setback, 50 feet instead of 25 feet. Some fire protection issues and clarifying the buffering standards. I just want people to be aware of that, and these will be voted on at the open town meeting, which is next Wednesday, May 5th. Meeting starts at 6:00 PM in the parking lot at MDI High School. So show up and vote on this and other issues as well. And second, I just want to make people aware that there's a committee working on a new comprehensive plan. And as many of you probably know, a comprehensive plan is basically a roadmap for the town's future and serves as a guide for changes to our town ordinances. And at some point, voters and taxpayers will be getting a survey. And the opportunity to make their opinions known in various meetings, the meetings, things haven't been decided yet. So just keep your eyes on things and I urge everyone to participate in that, okay. That said, I'll get off my soapbox a little bit and discuss the procedure for tonight. I discussed this with our Code Enforcement Officer Jesse, as well as Town Manager Chris Saunders. And this is what we decided would be the best way to handle this fairly, I know a lot of people want to weigh in. And there's gonna be an order for presentations and time limits for speakers. And for allow, have, allow an initial comment from the applicant or their attorney, we're gonna give them 15 minutes. Planning Board can ask questions with no time limit afterwards. Next, the attorneys and engineers who are representing the people in opposition to this project, they too will get 15 minutes. The applicant or their attorney then will have two minutes for a rebuttal if they so choose, the board also can ask questions, no time limit there. Next, the public, and it'll be in this order. Anyone receiving in a butters letter goes first. Then Tremont residents and taxpayers. And then finally, residents of other towns who may wish to speak. Comments will be limited to two minutes. Please identify yourself, state your physical address. Also, please, one comment per question and planning board members, if you wish, you can respond outside of the two minutes. We're asking everyone to utilize the Zoom raised hand function in order to be recognized. Jesse, in a minute, will explain how to do this. He'll also serve as timekeeper and raise a card, yep, your card's handy there, Jesse. Okay, that, that card, the, the blue, blue one, is that blue? Blueish one there, that means you have 30 seconds left and the other one that's flashing, the pink one there will be your time's up. Jesse also is gonna be master of ceremonies here, he'll be responsible for acknowledging each speaker. And he'll start timing when that person begins to speak. And since this procedure is new to board members as well, I want to make sure they understand or are in agreement with this. I don't need a vote, do any board members have any questions or anyone opposed to this method of doing business?
I think it makes sense to me, Mark, thanks for laying it out.
Yep, yep, well, we had several discussions about it and we want to make sure it's fair to everybody. And we know we have a lot of people to get to tonight. And Jesse, I think now's the time for you to give your little spiel about how to raise hands and.
Mark, one, one other point, Mark.
Okay.
If we have two minutes per resident, 15 minutes, is it per professional?
Yes. Attorneys and engineers will have 15 minutes and then, yes. If they so wish, hopefully they'll be, they'll be able to sum things up much more quickly, but.
I'm sure.
And Mark, are you, is there a, do we have an expectation or should we set expectation about an end time or are we gonna try to go as late as we can?
It's my, my goal and hopefully the goal of others to get through this tonight. I don't want to delay it, I, I want everybody to have due process and get things done here.
Brett has joined the meeting.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest put 3:30 as a time limit.
Let's see how it goes. Is that okay? I want to recognize that Brett's here at 5:15. Brett, where are you?
Well, I'm on more of the squares.
There you are, that's right. It's like Hollywood, Hollywood squares here.
Yeah, and one tip, especially for board members, but others may choose to do this as well, you can rearrange your squares by clicking and dragging. And so I found it useful to be able to have the board at the top and the applicant near the top so that I can see those people next to each other.
Yeah, I did ask Jesse about that earlier and we weren't sure how to do it, but, so we can just drag them to the top.
Yeah, you should be able to see, it looks like a hand as you move your mouse over the squares. And then you can click and drag, at least that's how it works on my screen, I don't know if it works for other people that way, but.
Okay, we can do that individually, Jesse doesn't need to do it.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's all individual, yeah.
Okay. Let's get started, Brett, you didn't get to hear the, the procedure tonight.
I did, I was actually here at 7 past.
Okay, okay, let's correct the record, Brett was here at 7 past 5. Thank you, so you're okay with proceeding that way?
I am.
Okay, good, okay, well, let's start. The applicant, Greg or Andy, whoever may want to start and we'll.
So.
Oh, hold on, hold on a minute, I forgot Jesse was gonna do.
If anyone doesn't know how to raise, raise their hand, there should be an icon at the bottom of your screen that says raise hand. Or depending on what your, what version you're in, if you go to the participants, open the participants window and click the more option, there should be an option to raise your hand there. You can also do Alt-Y on a PC or Mac laptop computer keyboard. And you're on a mobile device. You hit the more in the lower right-hand corner and you should see a raise hand icon. Once you've raised your hand, you'll go to the top of the list, I will go in order of the top of the list and then lower the hands as people speak and you'll just need to give me a couple of minutes to unmute those people. If anybody is having trouble with the raising the hand, they can send a message to me. And I will try and help you raise it or make a note to call on you to speak at the end of the raised hands. So let's see, Greg, last to unmute. Greg, who else would you like unmuted for this portion?
Cynthia Orca. David Moise. Andy Hamilton. Jonathan Pottle. Kenya and James Hopkins. And Dave Moise. Dave Laptop, yep.
So we know who most of these people are, Greg, but who are the Moises?
David Moise is a certified soil scientist and licensed site evaluator regarding the resource mapping and soils investigation on the property.
Thank you.
Those of you that I just unmuted for this portion, if you mute yourselves, you will not be able to unmute yourselves, you need to signal to me with your hand, raised hand if you need to be unmuted again.
So it's all right if I make a couple of preparatory comments, Greg?
Go for it.
So, good evening, folks, my name is Andrew Hamilton, I'm an attorney at Peabody. I recognize a number of the attorneys on the Zoom. More importantly, I recognize most all the board members. I was part of the first stage project, one that was approved in 2019. And that project is moving forward. I would say a procedural note, due process attaches to this proceeding in terms of recognizing the rights of the applicant. I would suggest in the future that there be a pre-hearing conference of counsel so that you can get input as to how folks should be able to address you and what the ground rules are. I, I know that this is new to the chair, I know the chair, he tries to be fair, but I think you might have a greater opportunity for fairness if you heard from counsel as part of the pre-hearing conference and those who might want to join so that when the rules for the meeting are set, it's fair to all. I'm gonna move right into the application. We really appreciate and respect that Greg has taken the board through a completeness review. The board has completed that completeness review. We respect that the board has done a site visit where I'm sure there was no discussion of the project at the site visit because that would be contrary to due process considerations. I'm sure now that the board understands and appreciates that we are now proceeding into substantive review of the application. And I appreciate and respect and agree with Chairman Mark Good's statement that the proposed amendments will not apply to this project because it is a pending proceeding for purposes of main law. So I would like to thank the board for allowing us to speak. And I'd like to turn it over to Kenya Hopkins, who of the Hopkins, Kenya and James was gonna speak first.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Kenya Hopkins, my husband James and I are the owners of Acadia Wilderness Lodge. We have two children, three-year-old twins Kennedy and James. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I thought this would be a great chance to let you know who we are and why we decided to start this business. I met James in Miami about nine years ago, he told me he was from Maine. I met all of his friends from Miami before I finally even got to come to Maine. They always teased him and said that he was from the backside of the island. Well, when I finally came to Maine to meet his family, he showed me around. And the backside of the island quickly became my favorite side. I love cookies, blueberry pies and pepperoni and green pepper pizza at Gott's. I wait all year to have one of Thurston's lobster rolls or a moon pie at Hanson's. I think it surprised all of his buddies when I said I'd rather hang out on the backside than in Bar Harbor with them. It wasn't until we got married and had twins that we realized we wanted to be around our family. So we started talking about moving back to James hometown in Maine. We had the idea to start some type of family business so that we could raise our children where James grew up and be around our whole family. It was honestly a blessing that we were able to purchase his great-grandfather's house that his mom grew up in. I just remember that we were so excited to get the keys. Finally, we had the land and we had the idea of starting a family business. We just needed to decide what kind of business it was gonna be. And for us, a campground just made good sense. I have a master's in business, so I know business, James has been in the hospitality field for 20 years, so he's not, he knows hospitality. My mother-in-law knows caretaking, my father-in-law is a carpenter and a construction worker. So it just made sense for us to do this business. We just needed to make it come to fruition at this point. The whole process actually started three years ago. Since we started, two glamping campgrounds have sprung up in and around the island. Unfortunately for us, they were backed by billions of dollars. Our little campground on the quiet side, as I now more affectionately know it, has just our family and our working-class dollars. It's been a long journey and we're finally here. I just ask the board that the board treats us fairly. We put our hearts, blood, sweat and tears into this project, our whole family has. We can't ram our way through the system with billions, but we can work with the community and build something that the town of Tremont or our entire family was born and raised and still live can be proud. We've read your letters, we've heard your concerns. I just want to assure everyone that we're moving to Tremont to be a part of this community. We're doing this project not only for our kids, but we're doing this for your kids and grandkids too. Because we will be sharing this town together. We want to build something special for all of us. We look forward to working with all of you to make this possible, thank you for your time.
Great, and James, you had perspective that you also wanted to offer, thank you, Ken.
Yes, hello, hello, everybody, my name is James Hopkins, for those who don't know me, I am the fifth generation of my family to own this piece of parcel that we're here to discuss this evening. And it belonged to my great-grandfather, my grandfather grew up there, he even attended the school that is now the church across the street. I was born and raised on Kellytown Road. I went to school at Tremont Consolidated, I then went to MDI. So I know the neighborhood, I know the community very, very well. After graduating college, I moved south and started my career down here, but quickly realized that I miss Maine. And now that I have two little ones, we really miss family and friends and want to get back. So this business is really a way for us to get the kids back, allow us to come back and raise them where I was blessed enough to be raised. I really want to thank the town of Tremont, I wanted to thank the, the board members for allowing us to share our story. And I really just, you know, I'm looking forward to a, a fair process. And I want to make sure that the town people know we're here tonight to listen to what you want to say and do with the project. And we want to make this something that you can all be proud of, so we will be taking notes. We want to hear your thoughts and if we can make some changes and do some things that you guys would be happy to have in this town, we're happy to do it, so. Thanks so much for your time. And we're looking forward to hearing your concerns and thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Ken and James, I would just add that we know and respect that the town will give us a fair opportunity to succeed as part of a careful review of the application. We're listening and noting carefully all that the board and our neighbors can offer for support, concern and considerations. Our team wants the review to start tonight, but we know that it cannot be completed this evening. And we are open to how the review should and will proceed. Thank you for listening and we now hand this over to Project Engineer Greg Johnston, Greg.
I'll be brief, thank you, guys. So let's start with, we're here in the Residential Business District, RB District, and the applications for campground. I want to be perfectly clear what it is we're applying for and how the definitions of the LUSO apply. So I'm gonna fast forward a bit to the Residential Business Zone. So it states that all uses are permitted, subject to lot, structure, performance and convergence standards. This is for very specific standards as we delve into substantive review. The, the standards of all uses and we're applying under a campground. Campgrounds are actually defined in the ordinance, we don't have to go looking or Google searching for what a campground is. And, and it's been described as many things, but the definitions are pretty clear. The definition of campground is an area tractable land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles or other shelters. What you've got in the site plan is a mix of RV spaces, cabins and, and, and tent sites. Those are all considered other shelters. The ordinance clearly allows all uses, campground is fairly broad, but towards the end, they specify what, what sort of accommodations can happen there. If we delve a little bit further into what are the, the standards we're required to meet under the zoning standards review, and I'll, I'll pause and if the board has any questions as we go, I know we're time limited. Please interject, I'm looking at notes, I may not see your, see your hand, so. The Residential Business District, we went over, it's subject to lot and performance standards, it's allowed use in the district. If we look at the standards for lots now, the minimum lot area for dwelling is 40,000, yet it actually specifies for campgrounds, it's 5,000 square feet per suitable land. Suitable land excludes roads, driveways and supporting wetland vegetation and land below high waterline of a water body. Jesse, I don't know if you have the share screen enabled. So in materials that you have, host is disabled.
Jess, you, you might need to make.
Okay.
Right now.
Let's see. Your sheet C2, page 98 of the site plan application delves exactly through what's required for a campground. When you subtract out wetland vegetation, driveways and roads, the property is about 42 acres. You subtract those areas out, you have 1,550 square feet, more or less. As proposed to make sure of campsites, RVs, cabins is 154 sites. By using the suitable land, you get 10,000 square feet per site as, as this has been designed. As this has been designed, and so the, the area required for campground use is 5,000. The, the laid-out density on this lot is twice the minimum land use lot standard of a campground. I did want to share quickly if that works. So if we take out wetland supporting vegetations, driveways and roads, as the ordinance requires, what you see here is all green is land suitable. That ends up being about 1,500 square feet, more or less, divided by the 154, that's 10,000, that's twice, twice what the ordinance minimum is. And that certainly was a reflection of, you know, prior applications, comments from the board. I also am gonna fast forward a bit to point out that, how does this compare? We looked at all other campgrounds in the vicinity. What you see is that you've got the Bass Harbor campground, you've got the Quiet Side campground, these are all campgrounds in Tremont. The density of those are around 7,000 square foot per unit. Around 5,000, Quiet Side is 5,000, so the ordinance standard of 5,000 square foot per site wasn't unintentional. There's, there's thought that went into this. The other campgrounds in the vicinity, Smuggler's Den, each one of those is, is in and around the 5,000, 6,000 square foot per, per site. This one is up at, up at 10,000 square foot. Continuing on and what we have as part of the substantial review portion, subject to lot, structure and performance standards, if we move into the structure standards, page 113 of the application and page 98 also shows in all instances, the structure setback is 15 feet. Based on recognitions of buffers and other experience, the structure setbacks are, are, are well into 50 feet where the minimum is 15. So as far as meeting the structure standards, we feel that the application has addressed these as required in the land use ordinance.
I'm just gonna hop in here, you, you referenced page, I don't know, like 98 or something, and that might be out of a PDF or something, but.
Sure.
We just have the printed version, so the page number, we lose the page numbers, I'm not sure where.
Fair enough.
Maybe you're.
Yeah, I guess my point being is that they're in materials you already have, not new information. And that the, in the supplemental, supplemental, which shows the stormwater site plan, we can share that. Let me see if we can bring that up. Stop gonna let me.
Jesse signaling 30 seconds, Greg.
Yep. So we also provided the board with a exhibit upon the request that should all the structures in the dimensional standards, you know, the height limitation of being 25 feet. Most of the cabins around 10 feet, you guys reviewed those structures when we're on the site. The board, we walked to the sites, but we walked to the site of the recreational building. The recreational building is less than 5,000 square feet, it's like 4,800 square foot. And so the. And so the, the structure standards, whereas twenty five foot is the maximum. We put the peak at like. Ten feet and sixteen feet for the recreational building. I think if the board recalls. Standing in those locations, those minimum stature buildings meet the structure standards for, for the district. I'll pause before we move on. I've, I've seen a few flashcards go up. I'd like to first ask the board any questions on this part, but also. We weren't necessarily scheduled for discussion after the site visit, but I, I'd also like to garner any reaction the board may have. To the specific locations we went to on the site visit or any other reactions from that, that meeting. Thank you.
Thanks folks. Board members, any questions for any of these folks?
I did have a procedural question. Chairman, good.
Who's talking?
Attorney Hamilton. Just a procedural question. Yeah, my, my, my question is this. I think you said in response to an earlier question from a board member that. The two other professionals. I believe attorney Katsefikis, attorney Plaguey, which each have fifteen minutes now. After, after the board's questions. So you're, you're giving the applicant only fifteen minutes and you're giving interested persons thirty minutes before the public even speaks?
Well, frankly, we didn't anticipate the Hopkins going into detail about their backstory.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with the fundamental fairness question of.
I, I do understand that.
So, so my question is, could we have the opportunity to sum up? And then make sure the board has the opportunity to ask us questions because. As you've said, this is a significant application for the community.
When I stated the procedure, I did say the board did have the opportunity to ask questions.
Right. So we'd like some questions from the board if that's possible.
If the board has questions. This isn't your only opportunity. We're going to be discussing the application itself at some point after the public hearing. Probably not tonight, but we'll be asking you plenty of questions and I'm sure you're going to get ample time to weigh in on all kinds of things.
So, so we're going to have the opportunity to sum up, Mr. Chairman, just briefly.
Board members, any objection?
We probably spent more time talking about it now than we, if we had just, just moved on and, and allowed them to do that at the end, we, we probably in better shape. Than we are right now.
Who wants to sum up?
I, I'll just sum up and say three things. Number one is you're going to hear a presentation from attorney Katsefikis that's aspirational in nature. We have a campground. We don't have dwellings. Subdivision is not required. We, we do meet the dimensional standards. We have a, a loud use in the residential business district. There's reference to a comprehensive plan that does not provide. The, the enforceable regulatory measures that the ordinance does. Those are the standards we have to meet. And we believe we meet all standards. I would also say just to sum up further, what you've heard from Kenya and James is important. Because they've indicated they have an openness. To further discussion with the neighborhood. And we would plan to have a discussion beyond tonight's meeting with the neighborhood. And so I hope the board will give us the opportunity. To address your questions. I hope the board does have questions because. It's through your questions that we can elucidate elements of the current application. And then have some sense of what's our foundation for the discussion with the neighbors. So I'd, I'd like it if the board would have some questions, but. I defer back to you now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. And as far as your comments about Mr. Katsefikis. Documents, that's why we'll plan for you to have some time for rebuttal. Afterwards, the two minutes. So, yeah.
Only, Mark, only two minutes. Wow.
Mark?
Yes.
One of the attorneys has a engineer report attached to it. Is the engineer present planning on speaking?
I have no idea. I don't even see Dan on the screen. I'm sure he's here though. Okay, board members, any questions for Andy, Greg, the Hopkins?
At, at this time, no.
Okay. Same here with me. Okay, fine. Lawson?
Yeah, no, I think I'm, I'm, I, I just always say like, thank you for the presentation. It's helpful to sort of frame the project. And I'm glad that you're here tonight to answer questions as they come up, but at this point I don't have any.
Okay. Since there are no questions. I guess Mr. Katsefikis next.
Mark?
Yes, Jesse.
I just need to give you an update that it appears the participant. Increase that Chris made the other day is not functioning correctly. Chris is working on it now. But it appears that we're capped at one hundred.
And he did do five hundred, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we have one hundred.
One hundred.
Okay. Well, that's a good question. Do we proceed or do we wait to get this fixed? It'll take?
I think we adjourn and wait to get it fixed.
He's working on it right now.
I think principles of fairness would suggest that we have patience and continue to. Take the time to allow the applicant to have some review of its project. I wouldn't want to deprive the opportunity for attorney Katsefikis, for instance, to speak to the issues.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
I think we have some patience and allow the cap that Jesse said is being worked out to be worked out. I don't see the need for premature adjournment.
So what do we do now? Some icebreakers maybe?
That's a good idea.
Hey, do you have any good stories? Kenya, what happened to Michigan State this year?
I was kind of just kidding, Mark. I don't think.
I was just kidding too.
It's a, it's a good collegiate basketball reference though, Mark. Can we switch to women's collegiate basketball? Cause I want to talk about what happened to Gino, Gino R M on the Yukon Huskies. They usually do. What happened?
They got beat by a better team.
Right. I'm afraid you're right, Mark.
And a side note, the Baylor coach, women's coach, no, the Baylor men's coach, sorry. Is from where I went to high school, Valparaiso, Indiana.
Valparaiso, interesting.
I have no idea how long this is going to take. Diane, while we have you here, what do you suggest we do? Just keep waiting?
So maybe you can move on to the second. Did you say Dan Polley was also here for another person that was opposed?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up. I didn't quite get that.
I think that, so as I understand it, in fact, I can see him, the attorney. For the Tremont, you know, Bert Edelman, Mr. Cuts, I'm going, I'm going to butcher this. Katsefikis is here. So the, the question is, the issue isn't that one of the attorneys isn't here to speak in behalf of one of the, some of the folks that oppose it. The issue is that we're at a hundred people. More people want to join. And so the question is whether we can. We can move forward under the circumstances where it's not clear to me that the, all the public can necessarily participate right now. I mean, that, that's how I see it. And I guess if I, if, if this were otherwise televised or available on like public radio, I would say move forward. And people can kind of join and, you know, participate as they can. But I think this is the only way that people can hear, even hear this right now, as I understand it. So the question becomes whether like the one hundred and first person right now is being deprived their right if we move forward.
Correct.
Correct.
We got to call IT.
Um, so Jesse, do you have an idea? I know Chris is working on it. Is he here tonight working on it or is he working?
Well, we just dropped down to ninety nine. Oh, we just went back up to a hundred.
He's working on it from home.
So. I, I agree that the, you know, the public should have a right to participate. I guess the question is though, if it's, if it's limited to five hundred and you get it working. You know, hopefully there's not going to be more than five hundred wanting to participate. I think at some point, given the circumstances, or you have to do a Zoom meeting. I think if the town makes a very reasonable accommodation to have the public attend and they, you know, they're not, not being able to attend. Then I would suggest we go forward with the meeting. But we would have to hold over and have another, you know, another meeting to give, to continue on and not make any decisions tonight.
Ju- just to constructively build on that suggestion. We're pretty clear, I think, in our initial comments, but I want to make crystal clear if we weren't. We anticipate that the public hearing can't be completed tonight. We just wanted the due process consideration to the applicant. To have the opportunity to have the start of the review happen tonight as was scheduled. And I think we should anticipate that. We did not get through even the start of the overview by Mr. Johnston of the applicant. Of, of the application. So what we'd like to do is suggest. We, we hold this meeting and as attorney O'Connell suggested, we would hold another public hearing. Beyond this. And we're, we're serious about the offer and opportunity. To sit with neighbors and have a discussion beyond tonight's meeting. We, we know that that will need to happen. So. I'd be pleased to suggest that there would need to be another public hearing and I think. You're going to afford more than opportunity to be heard by the public. Both through counsel and through individuals at tonight's meeting and at future night's meeting. We, we did not expect to get through a, a public hearing tonight. So I hope that's helpful to the chairman, but I think. We should, we should proceed and just give folks notice that there will be a continuation of the public hearing beyond tonight's meeting.
Andy, wouldn't that deny the people who are unable to participate tonight a chance to hear? Mr. Katsefikis or even your presentation? Are you suggesting we do it, have, make you folks speak another time?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's procedural irregularities already in this process that are going to need to be worked out. And I'd like the opportunity to talk to the town more about those. But putting those aside. I think what we're suggesting is there's going to be an opportunity to allow neighbors. Members of the public to weigh in on proper configuration of the project in their view. Cause we're going to afford that opportunity outside the planning board's review. The planning board will have the opportunity on a continuation of this project to have a further public hearing. Once we've had the further opportunity to get a neighbor and a public comments on what we propose. And so. This is a, a significant project, as you stated at the outset, Chair, Chair Good, and we're going to make sure. That there's more than ample public input and opportunity to be heard. It'd be different if we were saying tonight was the only public hearing, but we know different. And so I think for those ninety nine that are, I'm sure very communicative with their neighbors. Let's just make sure they know that on a date certain, we will continue the public hearing, but for tonight. Let's just get started with the review of the project. And, and not allow for more opportunity. I don't think anybody. Anybody's going to be deprived of the opportunity to participate at a public hearing because we're going to continue the public hearing.
I think party one oh one has been deprived and every party thereafter has been deprived if they cannot participate in hearing tonight's meeting.
I, I don't agree, Jeff. I think.
I'm, I'm sure you don't, but you're taking a position that I think is advantageous to the applicant and not fair to the town populace.
I, I, I certainly want to protect the rights of the applicant, but I think we do not want to have. Procedural irregularities in this public hearing process. And. I've already got a series of them that I've noted that we're going to need to talk about. All we're trying to do is make sure that we have a fair opportunity to be heard by the planning board. And, and the courts have been clear. You do not have to give every member of the public the opportunity to be heard on a specific night. If that were the case, whenever DEP or any other state agency, the land use planning commission has a hearing, you only schedule for one night. They don't do that. They schedule for multiple nights. And this is a proceeding that's going to take multiple nights of a public hearing. There are some people who couldn't make it tonight, I'm sure.
I think your suggesting creates more irregularities and, and helps solve many.
Yeah, that's your opinion, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm listening to yours as well.
Yeah, yeah, we can exchange.
Jesse, do we know what's going on? I see he's on the phone.
So while he is talking. You, you know, it occurred to me that the, some of the. Legal arguments and positions we're going to hear are already submitted in writing. So I don't see that. I, I guess I would tend to agree with Andy. I think we could move forward with some of those presentations because. They're, they're submitted in writing. I assume they're going to be summaries of what's already been submitted and just, and just start to move through it. I mean, we're already almost an hour into this. And we know we're going to go another meeting. At least.
Lawson?
Well, I'm curious if. If this, if this meeting is recorded, this meeting is recorded. And if it's made available to the public who can then. See, you know, attorney Hamilton's presentation and listen to the Hopkins presentation at the beginning. And presumably the other comments that will happen the rest of the evening. And sort of phase one, what, what ends up being phase one of our public hearing. That feels to me, I mean, they're not participating in real time, but they're able to sort of. Hear all of the comments. And then next week or whatever it is that we, we convene. They would be able to speak and hopefully at that point we could have more than a hundred people at the meeting. So I guess I'm feeling like it seems like. We could, assuming we don't close public comments tonight or the public hearing tonight, and as long as we. And so, so we, we have to continue the public hearing tonight and make the recording of tonight available to the public. That seems like a way to include everybody and make it available to the public.
The recordings do get uploaded to the, I think the website and, and the YouTube account.
It goes to YouTube.
Goes to YouTube. Okay. I just got off the phone with Chris. It appears to be some kind of technical glitch with Zoom. He has the confirmation of the increase, but it is not displaying the increase. And it, he said, it says our account is not eligible for technical assistance.
Oh, great. Okay.
I think, I think my colleague John Pottle had a, had a thought if he could be unmuted.
Yeah, thank you. I was, I had unfortunately muted myself and was unable to unmute myself. Thank you, Jesse. And I, and obviously I know Diane is here advising the board. I get, I guess my concern would be we have a, a limit of one hundred. On there right now. I, I agree with the notion that someone can look at the recording, but I also think we should be mindful. Of the remote participation statute that was authorized and the ability of folks to actually. Be able to listen in terms of participation. I think it'd be helpful if the hundred can be increased to five hundred. I think we should continue. Um, I think we should continue um with the understanding that there has been a a gap. Um, but also there will be a continuation of the public hearing such that if there is anyone potentially dissuaded from the gap for some reason unknown to any of us, they nonetheless have the opportunity to participate at a later date. I think that would be uh procedurally uh sufficient and in keeping in both with the remote participation statute, but also to any type of due process or fairness consideration for all the participants. So I I just wanted to weigh in on my comments with respect to that because there's a couple of different things we need to be mindful of and we have a a Zoom snafu that we're trying to figure out.
All right, what is that statute that you just mentioned?
It it was the statute that the legislature had passed uh just before they adjourned uh the at the outset of the pandemic. Actually, it's what authorizes these types of meetings to be held remotely, whether it's by video or or teleconference. So, you know, the way I sum it up is all the board members need to be so to to hear hear and listen to each other, but the same would be true for members of the public.
So what you're suggesting is what Andy suggested, continue on and a couple of the board members, continue on with this public hearing. Make it known that we'll be scheduling another public hearing and that hopefully the technological wait, I see a hundred and one.
I I think if we solve the hundred to five hundred limit, uh Chair Good, I I I think you're accurate in that. But if we haven't solved that, I I think we should wait to make sure that that everyone is able to listen and hear.
It says five hundred now on the website.
So it's been fixed.
Yep.
Good job, Chris.
Yeah, it must have heard my voice.
Okay.
It'll stay at a hundred and one the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, where were we? We're going to let uh Mr. Katsapikas uh do his presentation. I don't see him here. There you are. Thank you.
You're unmuted.
Let them know when time starts.
Name Jim.
Good evening, Chair Good, members of the planning board. I assume my time starts now. Thank you. Uh, one quick thing, we were talking about uh the public proceeding. Just uh in the future, take a look at section four oh three of the Freedom of Access Act subsection one. It says that uh all public proceedings must be open to the public and any person must be permitted to attend a public proceeding. That would sort of go against the idea of shutting things off if we if we ran it out. Um. My name is Jim Katsapikas. I'm an attorney at Perkins Thompson Law Firm in Portland and representing several property owners in in Tremont, Bert Adelman and Lydia Rogers on Hodgson Road, uh Josh Pearlsway, Natalie Hamilton's Point Road, Sarafina and Matt Michael Luck of Carver Road and Ellie Andrews Clark Point Road. They're concerned citizens concerned about this application by Acadia Wilderness Campground. All of them are concerned about the potential for increased traffic, for noise, light, glare, and just diminution of property value by this project. Why are we concerned? Well, let's take a look first at what's being proposed here. It it's forty-two point seven acres, as I understand it, almost forty-three acres. But what's going on the property? Well, it's seventy-two recreational vehicle sites, forty tent sites, forty-two cabins, a general store, a check-in building, operations office, recreation building, wellness building, maintenance building, playground, freestanding bathrooms, sports fields, and then access roads, driveways, and parking spaces. Uh, that's a lot. It's quite a lot to put on one parcel. And then when we take a look at the zoning district, yeah, this is this is in the residential business. And in the residential business is a purpose for the district. That purpose, which is on page nine of the land use ordinance, at least my copy, the purpose of the residential business zone is to preserve the integrity of the residential uses while allowing for maritime-related and light commercial activity, which are compatible with the physical capability of the land. Light commercial activity. Did that sound like white commercial activity? All of those uses on one almost forty-three acre lot. And then let's take a look at the type of development. Uh, it was suggested that my comments are aspirational, that this isn't a subdivision. Well, if you take a look at what was provided provided as sheet C five in the supplemental application, um, it it shows cabin elevation. It's probably too small for you to see, but uh there's a drawing in the middle. And that drawing is representative of a standard cabin floor plan, eleven by twenty-one feet. And in the cabin, the the cabin proper, there's a bed. There's a separate bedroom with another bed. There are toilet facilities and also there's a cook space, cooking space. There's an area for a microwave oven, for a for a refrigerator, there's a sink. And when you take a look what the definition is under the land use ordinance for a dwelling unit, it has sleeping facilities, cooking facilities, and bathroom facilities. This is there on all counts as a separate structure. So it sounds like a dwelling unit. And if you divide a tract of land into forty-two lots and put a cabin on each, you would have a subdivision. But you don't have to divide the land into lots to have a subdivision. If you have the three or more dwelling units on a tractor parcel installed or constructed, you have a subdivision. So this looks like a subdivision. I haven't been present at all of these meetings. I understand that at an earlier meeting, I've been informed since I prepared the letter that uh the applicant had indicated that it would withdraw the cooking facilities. If that's the case, then I would hope that if this board were to approve the project, it would attach a condition of approval stating that there would be no cooking facilities in these cabins. And that's going to put the code enforcement officer in a difficult position of being, dare I say it, kitchen police, going around to make sure that people who are using these cabins are are not cooking surreptitiously and in violation of their land use permit. But let's, if you're going to approve this, let's put that condition of approval on. As far as the size of the development, this is too much development for this parcel. Again, forty-two point seven acres. And if you want to put it down into square feet, I understand that's uh one point eight six million square feet. What's the minimum lot size? Well, and if these are dwelling units, I think they are. If they don't have, if they have the cooking facilities, then it's forty thousand square feet. If it's not a dwelling unit, what is it? It's a cabin, yes. But is it a principal non-residential structure? It's non-residential because if you take up the the cooking area, it's a structure. Is it principal? Why not? The uses that you'd find in a campground under your definition are temporary structures like tents and RVs that are temporarily present. This is a permanent structure. Um, I was working in Freeport recently, trying to work with a campground owner, trying to improve. And uh he could not, they could not put these types of cabins in under this exact definition of campground that you have here because it wasn't a temporary structure like a tent or like an RV. So we have here a principal non-residential structure, which also requires forty thousand square feet. When you do the math, you wind up with one point six eight million square feet being taken up by these cabins. Another five hundred sixty thousand square feet for the recreation recreational vehicles and camp sites. And you are now over the square footage that's allowed total, that that exists total in this lot. As far as the uh building limits, if you take a look to an RV, remember, this is for light commercial activity in the in the RV district. So there's a structure standard and it says, with regard to structures, the building size not to exceed five thousand square feet. I don't think that ordinance was intended to allow a series of buildings under just under five thousand square feet. But was meant to be an aggregate limit on the amount of building that you could do on a lot in a zone that only allows light commercial and is predominantly primarily for residential uses. Uh, if you tally up the square footage of all the buildings we have here, I think we're safely over five thousand square feet. When you take a look at the lot coverage, it's twenty-five percent. I I've looked through the application and maybe I've missed it and Attorney Hamilton will correct me. Uh, I don't see what the lot coverage is for this application. The twenty-five percent limit exists under the ordinance. For parking, there was a table of parking required, but if you look under the land use ordinance, uh, when you're talking about parking standards, if it's a if it's a dwelling, a single-family dwelling, two parking spaces. If it's a cabin with more than one bedroom, it's going to have two parking spaces. And then you also have to have parking for the number of employees that are on the site. They're counting in their parking standards in their application forty-two parking spaces for the cabins. It should be eighty-four. And I don't know if that affects the parking standards. I don't know if that affects the analysis. I don't know if that affects traffic counts. But it's different than what was represented as part of the application. Uh, traffic and seasonality, is this going to be a year-round campground or is this going to be seasonal? Because if there are going to be uh RVs on site during winter months, there are standards for utilities that are required for heat, for electricity, for water, for sewer. And and those will need to be provided. We don't see that here, but we don't, we don't know. With regard to uh traffic and stormwater, some of those concerns have been addressed, but there again, uh, stormwater has not yet been calculated under the DEP standards. And when we talk about DEP standards, there's probably more than three acres of disturbed area that might be regurgitated in this project, which means it would come in for site location development act law reviewed by DEP. That review looks at the common scheme of development, all of the property that's owned or the the owner may have an interest in that's related, that's part of this development. It's proposed that this be looked at in phases. Well, the entire application is before this board right now. The entire application ought to be before DEP right now. When we look at that, you know, perhaps parties might ask for phasing, but this is going to require approval for stormwater, Natural Resources Protection Act review, as well as Site Location Development Act review. So perhaps these could be standards, conditions of approval that would be attached to any approval this board might give to the campground that it received its DEP approvals first before building permit issues. And those approvals would be the Site Locational Act law, the Natural Resources Protection Act, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for wetlands. And if they can prove, if they can provide a non-jurisdiction letter that they don't need it, great. But it seems that it's going to trigger these reviews based upon what we've seen from engineering studies that it's in the record for tonight. Um. One concern we had looking at the town attorney memo, there was a apparently a lot of interest and conflicts of interest and bias. And we we wonder if there's some issue out there that hasn't been discussed or hasn't arisen yet that perhaps uh we should just uh discuss and get out of the way so that we can proceed in what I I know will be a fair and impartial review by this board. So those are our our concerns. You'll hear from others. I think I'm under fifteen minutes, so I I hope that makes the applicant a little little better predisposed. Uh, we uh we have concerns. They're substantial, significant. Uh, this is, as you say, one of the largest projects you've seen in the history of this planning board. I hope this ordinance is up to it. I know this board is. Thank you for hearing from uh from our con for our comments and welcome your questions.
Thank you, thank you. Before I uh give Andy or whoever time to respond, any questions or comments from planning board members? Looks like Jeff has something.
Yeah, I I on these subdivision provisions, you you talk about dwelling units and and there's all sorts of little conflicting definitions of dwelling unit and dwelling so forth and so. But they also refer to separate commercial or industrial uses. Aren't these buildings commercial uses and they would fall under the same sort of structure requirement as a dwelling unit would?
It's a commercial use as a campground, but the individual components here qualify as dwelling units and and the the individual cabins. And I know there are provisions in your ordinance that talk about cabins, transient rentals. This isn't, but this is a different situation. The the transient rentals that you talk about in cabins in hotels are for sleeping quarters as defined under the uh land use ordinance. These, as designed, as shown in the drawing, which is all I could really rely on preparing for this meeting, have the sleeping and cooking and toilet facilities all in, which is what is the textbook definition in your land use ordinance of a dwelling unit. The subdivision ordinance somewhat differently defines dwelling unit, but talks about a structure for, you know, intended for human habitation.
What 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 is the clause in our in our subdivision ordinance referring to exclusive of primitive camping facilities uh applied to this?
That would mean that it would exclude from the definition of dwelling unit and from subdivision, the primitive campsite, primitive camping facility. Um, I think this has been described as glamping or glamour camping. And uh if you have two bedrooms essentially, kitchen facilities, bathroom facilities, a living area, a deck. I I don't know that that qualifies for the kind of primitive camping facility. I I think of that more in terms of a lean-to or some some basic shelter, basic shelter from the elements, but not a not a cabin like this. But that's my interpretation. It's up to this board to be interpreting the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman. Anybody else? I have a Mr. Cat. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Lawson.
Sure, I just had a question. Um, Attorney Katsapikas, you talked a little bit about DBS DEP standards and stormwater, and you went through that pretty quickly. And I just sort of wondered if you could um elaborate a little bit more. Um, I know that the applicant did submit a pretty comprehensive stormwater management plan. And so I'm curious what what you were talking about when you were talking about other things that this might trigger.
There were concerns raised by the town's peer reviewer as to whether they had looked at all of the various levels of storm flows as as part of their analysis, recognizing that the town's own standard is relatively easy to satisfy at this point. Uh, but I think all parties recognize that DEP would conduct a more thorough review of stormwater. We don't have that in front of us and DEP will look at that.
And then you mentioned something about uh three acres of disturbance triggering NFPA and maybe some other Army Corps of Engineers.
Well, there there are several things that were that were picked up in in the report and I should really defer to Dan Pelagi, uh Attorney Pelagi, who's uh in T R C, who who went to that in greater detail. But if you look at that, they believe that the wetlands trigger will require United States Army Corps of Engineers review for the wetlands. Uh, and as far as Natural Resources Protection Act, that would be with regard to uh wetlands and uh triggers in any stream areas, but particularly the wet ones. And as far as Site Location of Development Act, uh that is triggered by development. And one of the definitions of development is three or more acres of disturbed area, non-regurgitated. So that's where that came from. Sorry to have spoken so fast. I was trying to get under that fifteen minutes.
Appreciate that. Thanks for spelling that out. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, I know you mentioned we would have a a chance to respond. And while um Mr. Katsapikas's uh, I guess, uh, report to the board is relevant. May we respond to his um comments before we carry on or?
I I would, Greg, I prefer to let uh any planning board members to ask them questions first and then you'll get your chance. Is that okay?
Sure, I thought that's where we were.
No, no, I actually, I was going to uh ask him something myself.
Okay.
And I have one more question.
Yeah, Mr. Katsapikas, uh, you mentioned uh about the state permitting. You just uh mentioned one as well, but uh under our ordinance, uh, article five, C, I mean, D, sorry, uh, campgrounds. It specifically says number two, campgrounds must conform to the minimum requirements imposed under state licensing. For these board's approval is conditional on a state license approval. So certainly anything we did there would be uh conditioned upon that, as you suggested. I just wanted to point that out. And and another question, uh, you you talk about subdivision, okay? I know there was a law court decision, Arundel v. Swain, that basically said, and there may be things, I didn't spend a minute in law school, so maybe you can enlighten me. that basically said, and there may be things, I didn't spend a minute in law school, so maybe you can enlighten me here. It, it says that campgrounds are not lots, campsites are not lots, I guess. It's a better way to put it.
Do you know? That's true, that's true in Arundel v. Swain. And then there was a case not too long after that, Naples v. Meechaw, the town of Naples, where it was determined that if you had a, uh, an area that was, that you reasonably intended to return to each year as your campsite, congratulations, you had a lot. So uh, there, that, that has, that shifts. You could probably have five attorneys in a room, and I think Mr. Hamilton will agree, five, five municipal attorneys in a room and get ten different definite, ten different interpretations of the subdivision law. But I think the one we're worried about right now is whether, whether the placement of three or more of these cabins on one tract or parcel of land constitutes a subdivision. And I think my opinion is that with regard to uh, this proposal for a, for a cabin that has cooking surfaces, a cooking area, and has sleeping quarters and has toilet facilities, it meets your dwelling unit definition in the land use ordinance. It's intended for human habitation under your subdivision ordinance. It looks like and walks like and talks like a dwelling unit, and therefore subdivision approval should, uh, review should apply. If it isn't going to have the cooking facilities, great, um, Mr. Dunbar or his successor will have a good time trying to police that.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing dissimilar than what other code officers have to do throughout the land, uh, Jim. Mr. Chairman, I think, I, I think we're gonna have the opportunity to agree on more than what, what we disagree on. So i- if, if you'll give us some opportunity to get questions from the board as applicant and not continue this idea that the opponents to the project get all the airtime and we don't have any opportunity to respond, we could feel better about the fairness. But I, I'm, I'm concerned about whether we're having a fair review this evening, so.
You're concerned because we didn't ask you a question. Maybe your presentation, we didn't listen.
No, no, that's, that's not the point. The point is you've given fifteen minutes to Attorney Katsefikus, and you've given us no opportunity to respond. And you might find that I agree with Jim more than I disagree with Jim, but you won't even give me the chance to respond to what he had to say.
But when we talked about the procedure, I stated that we were gonna give you time to respond. We're just, the planning board members now are just asking a couple of questions. You'll get your time.
Go, go, go ahead, Mr. Good. I think everybody else gets it, but go ahead.
I, I don't.
I'm sure you don't.
Lawson?
That's not nice.
Yeah.
I, th- this is Brett, you know, and I, I appreciate the comments of, of counsel. I do think though, that just because, you know, we didn't ask questions initially of the applicant, doesn't mean that it doesn't benefit, uh, doesn't help the applicant to hear the questions that we ask of the opponents, because some of those questions can help you understand what kind of what we're poking at, and you can respond to them when you do have the opportunity to respond. So on that point, I'm curious, in the Tremont Land Use Ordinance, I just wanted, it, it defines campground. And this is for Mr. Katsefikus. Um, and, and I think you're, you're hanging your hat on the, or comment on what you think other shelters means. Like, I'm, I'm just curious to hear. It, it speaks about in a campground about tents, recreational vehicles or other shelters. So how does that play into your, I, I think your position being that this could be, these could be dwellings that are, you know, part of, that would be subject to site plan review. How would you, how would you deal with the other shelters piece there?
Well, it's, i- i- it's interesting. I, I know that, as I said, in Freeport cabins weren't considered to be within other shelters, and we had to amend the ordinance in order to allow these kinds of, of shelters. Um, I think, um, something of a more temporary nature, a lean to that you might install for the season. Uh, something that's just really a, a temporary shelter from the.
So what about a yurt? What do you think of a yurt?
Personally, or, no, I, um, I, I, I don't know enough about them.
Campground down the road here that has yurts on it. They're, they're year-round. They're, they're pretty, actually, that you think they're tents, you go in, they're pretty, actually, pretty significant structures. And there are some, there was a bunch of them on the island now. And, and so, you know, you see where this sort of, you know, this continuum is.
Slippery slope. Uh, and, and I don't know, I don't know, but I think here where you're talking about an area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles or other shelters.
Well, but, but they're only there temporarily, right?
It's only used as a temporary, okay, then, and let's put a condition on this. I haven't heard anything about seasonality yet.
Yeah.
You know, so there, there are various ways to address that. And, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut off Attorney Hamilton. I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. I, I just wanted to.
I, I, I understand.
Sorry, planning board members, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move to, uh, Mr. Hamilton.
I'd like to go to one other question, if I may. I'd like, I'd like to go to our residential business zone, building size provision, which is uh, B C four. So I'm looking at it quickly, right? Uh, B, B two four. Uh, it says five thousand square feet for non-maritime uses not to exceed. So is it okay for me to interpret that maritime uses can exceed five thousand square, but non-maritime uses cannot exceed five thousand square feet?
There is an argument there for an enterprise and municipal attorney, Frank, but, but thankfully that, that application is not before you. I, I don't think this is a maritime campground, but I think you're, you could make that argument.
Okay, well, I want to go further then. So you have non-maritime related uses. And if you go to our definition of uses in our statute, it says a single op- activity occupying a lot. It may be recreational, residential, any number of commercial activities. Doesn't that sort of put all these buildings under the umbrella of not exceeding five thousand square feet in, in an aggregate total?
I'm sorry, where, where did you find that second piece? I'm, I'm trying to follow. I.
In the definition section of, of our land use ordinances, word use. I have it on page eighty-four, I think it is. Eighty-three.
Well, okay, that, that's right. I, I see the point. A use, a single activity occupying a lot, semicolon. That single activity may be recreational, residential, or any number of commercial activities. I would read that and interpret that in context as being any one of a number of commercial activities, because there are a number of commercial activities that could be on, but it uses a single activity occupying a lot. So I think that the proper interpretation of that, and I put it in my letter as well, is that would be any one of a number of commercial activities, not an unlimited amount, because at that point, you, you could have the store, you could have the retail outlet, you could have the home occupation, you could have the, uh, the institutional use, any sorts, all sorts of things, all in one lot. I don't think that's what that was intended to do. Especially when you've got a limited commercial purpose.
And, and a campground is the purpose, is the use?
I, it sounds like the use is the campground, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Andy, I guess you're on.
So, um, I'm gonna offer a procedural objection for the record, and that is, we will not have time in two minutes to address all Attorney Katsefikus' points. You'll find that we're more agreeable than even your time limit, uh, Chair Good. But objection for the record, we, w- w- we're not gonna have the opportunity within two minutes to address all of the comments that Attorney Katsefikus made. So I think your, your procedural rule is fundamentally unfair, and I object to it. So we'll proceed nonetheless, and I'll ask Mr. Um, Johnston to join me in the response. And the first response I have is, I agree with the two proposed conditions that Jim has offered. We're fine with a condition that there can't be all three in, in any of the units that will be in this campground. There can't be sleeping plus toilet facilities, plus cooking facilities. We will make sure that we do not have all three in each of these units. And I've worked with any number of code officers across the land, including on Mount Desert Island, that know that you've got to look at that issue, because the definition of dwelling is common across the state of Maine. You gotta have all three before you have a dwelling, and we don't, and we won't, and we're okay with a condition of approval. The second condition of approval that I agree to, and it will be brought up by Attorney Pelagi's presentation with T R C, is we will get those state approvals we need to get, and we'll accept any condition of approval by this board that we have to get, the approvals from the state we have to get. But because of the expense of going through multiple proceedings at the same time, you often find that applicants, uh, use, uh, a, a longstanding practice of this town, as well as most towns in Maine, that you, you get local input first, you get the local review done, and then you, you finalize the design, and then you permit based upon that finalized design. And any number of people can say, whether technical or legal tonight, you should be getting the Site Location and Development Act approval. If this project stays configured the way it is, uh, uh, unless it's reconfigured, yeah, there's gonna be some approvals that will have to be obtained by the state. But we're not even done yet, folks, and you won't give us a chance to work with you. Instead, you impose time limits that, that shut us down before we can even have a conversation with the board. So I made the objection, but Greg, what do you have for thoughts in terms of responding to Jim's thoughts?
Thank you, Andy. Uh, Jim, I'll point out, um, and maybe it wasn't in the package, but on three twenty-three, we did submit a plan. The board had requested, uh, some information on building dimensions. And, uh, erroneously, they did have a, a, a floor plan that was replaced on three twenty-three without kitchens, um, was sent on. So the commitment to having no kitchens not only was, uh, in document, maybe not through the files you have, but also the board will acknowledge that's been a, a part of the expert testimony throughout. I think we're nodding. Um, the second issue, um, I guess we're talking about the, the building size in the, um, in the land use ordinance where it says the, um, um, non-building size, non-maritime related uses not to exceed, not to exceed five thousand square feet. Let's just think about what that is. We read it logically and it subsets in that, and if, under the word building, well, the land use ordinance doesn't define building. But if we go to the site plan review ordinance, it does define building, and the building is defined as a structure built for the enclosure of human goods, um, and property. Uh, so the five thousand square foot limit is clearly through the definitions, not taken in aggregate, um, because it's defined as a single unit. Um, we're carefully reviewed the ordinance, and we pointed out earlier through the structure standards that the recreational building has been planned at forty-eight hundred square feet. That's not because we don't think accessory structures can't be larger, but we understood the ambiguity around this definition and explored the term structure and building, uh, and size. I think the other point we want to touch upon, uh, which is in the application, is the, um, the lot coverage. Um, lot coverage in the, in, in this, uh, is this, um, zoning district is defined as roofs, overhangs and eaves, and you'll find on, um, the supplemental submittal from three sixteen, a plan sheet that has the lot coverage on it. If you didn't find that with the prior plan that did not include kitchens, we're happy to forward it to you. Uh, the lot coverage after you take out, um, all the buildings, it ends up being around two percent. Uh, it only includes in this district, because it's outside the shoreline zone, um, roof overhangs. I think that kind of addresses, I think, the global comments of, um, dwelling lot coverage. I think they're in there. I also think that the overall, um, comments regarding light and glare, um, the board will resonate, uh, at some point in time. Their experiences during the site walk, um, to which, uh, we went to these facilities that may have, uh, the accessory activities, um, in them. You can't see out, you can't see off the site from them. And I also want to point out, which may even come up further, um, and, and it's been raised in traffic. What about the, what about the, the sports fields? What about the recreational facility? Uh, the very first introduction, let's just say, even the very first, first, first page of the application, very first page, there are mentees for the campsite and, uh, for their use only. It doesn't say we're inviting the public, and that's been another point of discussion with prior meetings. Um, if we listen to the tapes and update from prior proceedings, it's clear that we've said for, um, for the guests only, not the public. And that's on like the second page of the application. So, um, those, I think, the highlights. I'll pass it back to Andy, uh, for any further comments. Thank you.
Hold on a second. Uh, you certainly had more than your two minutes and, uh, I have no issue with that. I mean.
I couldn't see.
We can't, we, we, we came, we came up with these, uh, this plan, uh, not knowing really what to expect. Two minutes might be a little draconian, I admit. And I don't know what the feelings are of other board members. Should we keep going this or allow them a little extra time?
Mark, I wouldn't have did anything, but what I would say is that, you know, look, most, you know, if they have, usually the work is you sort of have equal time, and then in a reply, you've got half the time. So I would give him, look, i- if, if they have more to say, let him, let him, let him speak. But I think that two minutes is short. If there's fifteen minutes for the applicant, you know, and fifteen for the, I think it's fifteen and fifteen thirty. And then I get his point. I, I think he just left them, if they have something to say, let them, let them say their, what they have to say.
Anybody else?
I, I, I think if you, if, if you look at this, the fact the applicant starts the whole process.
Diane?
Yeah, I, you know, I would like to weigh in, and I think that, um, the main thing you need to be aware of here is that it is, uh, the applicant needs to be given due process. They need to be able to, you know, present their, um, you know, their project, and they certainly need to be given the opportunity to respond, you know, to every legal argument raised by the other party and to, you know, do that. And I think, I think the idea that you're, um, putting the time limits on is clear, because it's a lot of people here, and the meetings can go on for quite a while, but I think that the time limits might be, you know, a little bit, um, wishful thinking, and I think you just need to be a bit more flexible and allow the applicant to address some of these legal issues that have been raised and give their point of view.
I agree. Andy, are you happy if we'd be a little more flexible and allow you a little more time to respond?
And just, just, just as an indication of my good faith, um, again, we repeat the notion that we're not here to fight a battle, just the opposite. We're here to make sure that we're given a fair opportunity to talk about our project that we know is gonna involve substantial public input. And we want to offer more opportunities for public input, not less. So on the subdivision question, I don't want the board to travel under the notion that we've got dwellings, so we've either got a, a, a land subdivision. We're, we're not lotting uh, these areas where the, the tents, RVs, um, or, or, or camp cabins are being replaced. Camp cabins without cooking facilities, which I think fits within the notion of shelters. That's a, a term that's used in, in, in the ordinance, uh, with respect to campgrounds. But there's gonna have to be input on this project, and I just think to make sure it's a level playing field is a good idea. And you're now suggesting that, Chairman? So I'm, I'm appreciative that you're listening, uh, to the procedural concern. Um, I would also say that I think all of the presentation from T R C um, and, um, Attorney Pelagi, that really builds on the T R C review, is designed, again, it's aspirational. It's looking out into the future to say, this is what the project will be. We don't know yet. It's gonna be the subject of significant public discussion, public input, and we want more, not less opportunity. We actually think the planning board review process thus far is a bit cumbersome. And we, we think that there's gotta be a little bit more opportunity to hear from our neighbors, to hear from the public. And so we're gonna try to find the largest venue possible um, and use appropriate COVID practice and make sure that, um, we, we follow the governor's guidance um, for where it should be held and how it should be held. But we intend to engage folks, not shut them down, and that's, that, that was really my concern. In terms of, um, uh, Attorney Katsefikus, you noticed he answered questions very fairly, based upon case law and ordinance requirements. And I really don't have issue, um, with his approach. I just have issue with his conclusions, because they're premised on the idea that we have dwellings. And if I were in his shoes, and I was opposed to a project that, where I wanted dwellings as the conclusion, I'd probably make similar arguments. But Jim is a very fine attorney and a fine colleague, and, um, I really don't have major disagreement. Specifically, I agree with his two proposed conditions. Condition this project so that you can't in any of the shelters have cooking facilities. Um, we're, we're gonna be okay with that. Um, and then the second thing is conditioned upon, we've got to get state approvals. But if we can't allow, if we can't have the local people have the opportunity to weigh in on this project, then we're going to have. Issues that we didn't allow the public to have input and. As Kenya said at the outset, we want a project where people will be welcoming ultimately towards the guests that will come to this location. Why would we want to have a project where folks would not feel comfortable going to that location? So let's keep it safe, let's keep it fair, and let's make sure that this location is one where we do accept public input. And so I, I, I think Attorney O'Connell's advice is sound. Um, and, and I appreciate board members speaking up and saying, yeah, give them a chance to respond. And we'll show you that we'll act in good faith and be efficient with our time. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Is a microwave cooking facility? In your opinion?
Um, I've actually faced that question. I've also faced the question as to whether a um, a grill. Uh, which somebody proposed in one of the island communities that I represent, is, is that a cooking facility? Because you can sometimes have. You know, like, like the heater ovens, or you, or you might even have some form of grill. I think. If there's a heat source and you're cooking food over a heat source, it's likely cooking. So I think the cooking's got to be done outside.
With that argument, a campfire would be a cooking facility.
But the. But it's not inside the unit, but it's not inside the unit.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay.
Mark and I, I, Mark, I did just want to add that there was a. When we were asked for a, a format of the building, we paid a mention the dimensional. There was a idea that might be a, a microwave in there, but that subsequent three twenty three submittal eliminated those, but um.
That was noted by the board, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
We asked you that question, uh, a- and you did correct us, and I did see in. Uh, for, uh, later submittal that you did eliminate the mic- microwave. So, yeah. Thank you. Um, is Dan Pelagi here? There he is. Hi, Dan.
Evening. How are you?
Okay. Would you like to uh, say your piece now?
Thank you very much. Um, first of all, just to introduce my, I know you guys are sick of seeing me, but I'd like to reintroduce myself. Um, Daniel Pelagi, and I represent um, Cynthia and Stephen Lawson. They live at sixty six Kelly Town Road, Rachel Corman Ramos of eighteen Kelly Town Road. Robert Cantwell and Lydia Wegman who live on uh, one sixty six Clark Point Road. All in Tremont. I had um, prepared, I think, more lengthy um. Comments tonight than I, than I plan to give now based on what I've heard. But I got to tell you, um, based on the applicant's uh, latest statements, I'm confused. Um, Mr. Hamilton has now told this board that this project is going to change. Um, that this project is going to change perhaps dramatically as they have to meet state standards. And it seems to me then, if that's the case, we're doing this in the wrong order. Because the applicant is asking this board to permit something that will not exist on the face of the earth. In my materials, my written materials I, I gave you, um, I tried to focus on some issues slightly. That were slightly different from Mr. Katsifakis's um, presentation because I, I, there are a lot of issues here with this development. And I think that it's important to, uh, to, to look at all of them. Both the land use ordinance five D two and the site plan review ordinance where it talks about site utilization. Require that any project that you permit um, meet all applicable standards. And given the magnitude of uh, of this project, the amount of disturbed soil, the amount of fill, um, wetlands. It is um, almost certain that Natural Resource Protection Act permitting is going to be required. It is absolutely certain that site location permitting is going to be required. And it may be that US Army Corps of Engineers permitting is required. Site location development law in Maine um, contains a bunch of standards. In many of the same areas that Tremont's two ordinances um, regulate. But the, but the regulations are in some cases different and in many cases more stringent. And that can include in um, noise, which you don't uh, address, blasting, flooding, odors. Um, uh, wastewater disposal, water supply, groundwater, stormwater, wildlife, natural resources. Again, regulated to a different and often more stringent degree than Tremont regulates those things respectfully. Because of that regulation and, and based on what Mr. Hamilton just said, I think this. Design, whatever this campground application is going to look like, in the end, it, it's not going to be what's before you right now. In the application materials, I understand that the applicant indicated that um, they would uh, get. Um, they do this in phases so that they would um, avoid state permitting initially. Well, no phases are presented to you. Even if they were phases, the site location law, because it's a common scheme of development. Requires that the whole thing get permitted under state standards anyway. But this board is already being shown the entire project. And it's clear that these state standards need to be met. I want to spend a little bit of time and, and uh, quite frankly, some of those standards um, include Vernal Pool Mapping. Um, and we are, uh, if we haven't left it already, we're rapidly leaving the time that. Um, relevant studies should be, uh, should be undertaken in terms of the time of the year and the condition of the, of the soils. With respect to your standards, the site plan review ordinance and the land use ordinance standards. What I, what I want to submit to you is that the erosion control plan lacks detail. There are no details in terms of um, how slopes are going to be stabilized. How sediment uh, streams, uh, how streams are going to be protected from sediment. Um, how the downstream saltwater areas are going to be uh, protected from. Sediment uh, from the construction. And the post-development activities. That's mandatory under, under your um, standards. There is um, no study, no finding, no opinion other than Mr. Johnston's regarding the presence or absence of historical. Archaeological protection um, standard or, or sites that require protection. A blanket statement is not evidence that's, that meets your ordinance requirements. Now, it may be that there's nothing there. I don't know that. You don't know that, and if that's the case, then the applicant hasn't met its burden of proof. Um, there's no blasting plan. Given, I, I submitted the report by, by TRC and what's, what's clear is that there's a lot of this project. From uh, from uh, electricity to water to wastewater, um, uh, disposal sewage. Water supply, all of that stuff is supposed to go underground in an area in which the depth of bedrock is extremely. Extremely shallow. In order to do that, I don't doubt that they're going to do that, but in order to do that, you have to blast. The ordinance requires a blasting plan. There is no blasting plan in this application. There's simply a statement saying. We'll comply with applicable standards. Representing uh, folks that live next door to this project, I can tell you blasting is a major, major concern. Um, and the utmost protection ought to be included in this application to make sure that the neighbors. Foundations are going to be safe, to make sure that all necessary protections exist. It's not in there. And if it's not in there, they don't get a permit. Uh, respectfully, um, the um, um, stormwater management plan. Um, there's a lot of information in the engineering report that I submitted. Suggesting that incorrect models were used for the stormwa- stormwater um, measurements here. Um, I disagree and um, uh, the report that I submitted disagrees with Haley Ward. Regarding the adequacy of the stormwater management plan here. It's a start. There's a lot of information there, but it's not complete. And it doesn't meet your ordinance standards. Um, just as a couple of examples, um, there are no uh, construction details of the fire pond that are, that's noted on the plan. The elevation modeling and site conditions are different. There's a discrepancy between the two. There's reference to an emergency spillway that's not located on the, on, on the plan. Um, all of that um, needs to be addressed. Um, I think finally, it's important um, that you, to you hear from me. I want to uh, echo and affirm Mr. Katsifakis's comments. Regarding the definition of these cabins as principal non-residential structures. They are permanent structures offering overnight accommodations. They are um, overnight accommodation camping is certainly the, the principal use of the campground. Um, and each of those structures in the RB zone requires forty thousand square feet. Of uh, of, of area in order to accommodate um, your uh, zoning district land use restrictions. They can't do that on this uh, a lot this size. Um, I heard um, Mr. Young talk about the campground definitions under the land use ordinance. Um, the fact that the, that, that the definition section refers to temporary living quarters doesn't mean. That the permanent cabins don't also get considered as principal non-residential structures. I think that, I think that they, you know, if you find that they're temporary living quarters. The fact that they're permanent and on the ground means they're also principal non-residential structures. So um. I, I, I'll leave it to you and Mr. Katsifakis and the applicant to determine whether subdivision law applies. But I think for certain lot coverage issues apply that aren't met with a number of cabins. And then the subsequent number of campsites, tent sites and RV sites that, that exist on the lot. Um, I, I'm happy to answer questions. I'm a little reluctant. I shortened my presentation tonight because I keep hearing that this application's going to change. Um, a- and I think that um, that it's important that the board get to consider. The actual application that looks like what the um, the applicant plans to build. I think then I can provide more constructive comments about the um, the, that matter, that, that applications or that developments. Um, uh, relation to your two ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, board members, questions for Dan? Are we thinking or no?
Uh, Dan, uh, do you? Have any comments about the, the applicant? Does try to maintain a setback of fifty feet versus fifteen feet as buffers.
Yeah.
And which is very generous and, and it's been an issue of mine in other applications that do protect all the neighbors. Um, but do you feel that uh, what you've seen is adequate buffering for, for this type of activity?
Um, I appreciate that, that um, the applicant has offered greater than the minimum uh, buffering. Especially with a campground and the type of traffic and um, uh, smoke and noise. All of the things that happen, um, lazy um. Adult beverage consuming campers who don't want to use the bathroom facilities and choose to use the uh, the, the buffer area. Um, all of that, the fifty feet is appreciated. I believe that given the fact that it is a, is a campground. Um, that buffering is not sufficient in some areas. I think in the Burmud area, it, it may be. I think in the other areas, the board uh, needs to consider uh, requiring some uh, fencing. On the applicant's side of the fifty foot buffer, and I think that um, uh. More work needs to happen in terms of the placement of campsites uh, around the um, the areas uh. Uh, where the neighbors live. Um, all that being said, again, the site location uh, and development law standards are going to apply. Different and more stringent uh, buffering requirements to this application. Uh, I, I, I think it doesn't meet your ordinance and. Positive, it doesn't meet SLOTA requirements right now. I don't know what it's going to look like. I hope that answers your question.
Yes. I have one other question mark after.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, of the hundred plus letters we received in opposition to this application. A lot of people raised traffic issues, which is a concern of mine as well, and I have. Looked at our regulations and I've listened to Greg explain how he's gone to the manuals and so forth. And, and come up with statistics of, I think, sixty three per hour and with a hundred per hour threshold. But is there other ways that we can take and uh, think about traffic issues on given. Seasonal driving and, and versus winter traffic and, and uh, conditions of roads, et cetera, that. Uh, rather than just going flat out of some sort of manual.
Um, I think that um, I, I mean, in terms of traffic, I would suggest that, that this board could require the applicant to do. To use a different model of a hybrid model rather than campgrounds to determine the maximum number of trips, things like that. And I think that that in there, there's also the sort of um. Uh, inside traffic flow stuff that you can regulate, but to, to get to your issue. Um, that's a, that's a, um, that's a more difficult issue to um, to regulate. Um, I would suggest that it falls within the site utilization um, uh, section of the site plan review ordinance. And um, the uh, the overall impact on the road system, road capacity uh, can be considered. Uh, I don't uh, tonight have um. Uh, uh, what I want to say, that objective uh, um, models to offer the board for that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, um, you mentioned that this project will need state approval and maybe some federal approval. Uh, one thing you mentioned is the site location development law, and uh, I would agree that that would be the case. But from what I read in what you submitted and listening to you tonight. It seems like you're saying that's a prerequisite. To us considering, considering this application. And from what my reading of the ordinance, I don't find that to be true. It's conditioned. Any approval we give is conditioned. Upon them obtaining that. Is that correct? Or can you point to me, point where in the ordinance it's specific, it says. They need to get these permits before coming before us.
No, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, i- i- you can issue that condition and that um, will, may solve your problem. My suggestion to the board tonight was that because of the dramatic changes that it sounds like are coming, and I've heard the applicant say that several times. Um, that, that, that this isn't the final plan. Andy, let me finish, please.
Just, just be clear on what you're saying.
Andy, please.
You have to be fair again with the characterization.
Andy, I, 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 I sat silently for a long time, and I'll sit silently when it's your turn. Please sit silently when it's mine. Thank you. Um, I have heard the applicant say several times that this project is their, their intention is to change this project. Um, one in uh, conformance with a pla- applicable uh, state and possibly federal standards. The other is uh, in conjunction with um, neighborhood meetings. My point was is that uh, if the, if the um, site use is going to be different than that, it, than the application suggests. And that the site planning uh, suggests, then it might be a good idea to table this process. Let them go get their, their um. Their permits and let's look in, uh, and, and have a hearing about what's really going to be on the land.
I, I did understand you to say that tonight, but I guess I was referring to uh, what you uh. Proof of compliance with applicable state standards is required by SPRO section nine A and LOU. Uh, section uh, five D two.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think that's actually the case here. Now.
It is the, well, Mr. Good, it is the case because you have to, you're conditioning the approval on, on those permits.
Yeah, but they don't have to obtain those ahead of time.
But that's, yeah, it's not what I said.
That's what you wrote here.
No, it's not. You, you can't, the, the permits, by making the permits conditional on. Uh, acquisition of other permits from other entities. By, by, by definition, they can't build what they want to build until they have those permits. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, well, our uh, ordinance does require that condition, it to be conditional, correct?
Yes.
And uh, one would say that it is uh, these uh, like the site. Location development law and some of these other things are probably a higher bar. Standard wise than what we have in our ordinance. Would you say that's correct?
In, in a lot of areas, yes, not all.
Okay, and uh, I know that the applicant is. Talked a lot about being good neighbors and want to fit in with the community. Perhaps they would entertain um, uh, obtaining these permits and coming back to us. And getting that, uh, ge- getting those first. I think that's what you're suggesting, correct?
Um, I, I, I understand the applicant wanting to, to, uh, to present what they, what they have in this application, this site plan to the board. And to start this process and to start listening to neighbors. and to start this process and to start listening to neighbors. And and for the folks that I represent, we appreciate that. But at at this stage, I think it makes more sense if we're all talking about what's actually going to be on the land rather than arm wrestling on something that we think is going to change, probably fairly dramatically. That's that's my only point.
Stop saying dramatic, Dan. That's not fair.
I I'll retract the word dramatic. It may change significantly.
So so I think what a point I hear being made is that, you know, as a planning board, we're the ones who listen to the know our ordinance is theoretically the best, know our village and residents' concerns, and we try to work a project through the regulations, the ordinances and and what's worked for our village, a town. However, if you go to the state, after we approve, go to the state and they put new requirements in and changes, it may not be what we originally wanted ourselves. So there is some logic to go into the state first. So we know what we end up end up approving it in a day as the village ears and eyes is what what we want to have there versus approving one thing, having a change, not being what we feels worked for our community.
We'll have a response for that when you allow us, but I can't speak and do it aloud.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Other board members? Lawson?
Yeah, Dan, I just wanted to ask you to go through the lot covered concerns again. Seeing like that was a really important thing and I'll confess that I was with you from some of it, but it it, you know, and and I think that Attorney Katsifakis mentioned a similar thing. Anyway, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to take me through it because I'm not. I haven't fully wrapped my head around it yet, so.
Yeah, so let me let me let me first say that when I talked about lot coverage, I misspoke. Mr. Johnston's correct that the way your ordinance defines lot coverage for this use in this zone, it does relate only to overhangs. The lot area concerns that I have is that in this zone, this this district, your ordinance requires forty thousand square feet of lot area per principal non-residential structure. And then in addition to that, you require five thousand square feet of additional land area per tent and RV site. And the way that I trying to do the calculations based on the site plan that I had in front of me, there were forty two cabins, each requiring forty thousand square feet. That gets us up to one point six eight million square feet. We then have a hundred and twelve tent and RV sites each requiring five thousand square feet, which gets me again by my math, which isn't always great, but five hundred and sixty thousand square feet, which when combined with that one point six eight million exceeds the area that is exclusive of roads and wetlands, et cetera, that they can develop on. That's that's my argument.
Okay, I was able to follow that. Thank you for walking it through again and we'll we'll give the applicant an opportunity to sort of clarify if there's. Thank you, Mark.
I actually just want to follow up on that. So so you're not saying then that that the that the cabins are dwelling units?
I I have heard the the applicant say that they don't include one of the necessary elements to be a dwelling unit if they exclude cooking and facilities. And I've heard Andy say that he's willing to agree to that condition. I my own personal feeling is I agree that they are not dwelling units as defined under your land use ordinance.
Okay, so it's the principal structure. It's interesting because the ordinance uses the terms principal non-residential structure. Principal structure is defined. So it probably ought to say non-residential principal structure. But I digress. Yeah, I'll let I just wanted to clarify so that the applicant could speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, my point is is that the the each of those each of those cabins is used for a purpose that is exactly the principal use of a campground. It's not incidental or accessory. That's my point.
Ward, any other questions? If not, we'll move on. We'll let Andy and Greg or respond and we're not going to place a time limit, but please be concise. I appreciate it. Thanks.
We'll do that. Andy, I've got a few notes to run through. Some of the things, I guess, maybe it's the breadth of the materials that are enclosed there. I'll attempt to share a screen again, but the first thing which I I guess I can categorically say they maybe they missed it. But on the on the site plans, the question of slopes and what how we're treating slopes repeatedly throughout the the project and the plans, and it's pretty hard to miss, how are we treating down slopes? There are three to one. I see a lot of the opposition stating two to one steepness. How are we treating it? The erosion control standards and throughout the plans repeatedly state three to one. So I find it, I don't know, somewhat misleading to say we have no evidence in the application on how we're treating slopes and how we're preventing erosion. We know there's an erosion trail specification that is 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 complete and also more strenuous than I think what the ordinance requires. So I just want to point that out. The idea that slopes aren't. The second thing is I I kind of and see that the idea of stream and how we're protecting a stream. And I think that with Mr. Pelagi has an arsenal of of good professionals working with him that it would be careful on how it categorizes certain resources and how we need to treat them. The board probably is aware. I don't know if you you've delved through, but you guys have a definition of a stream, okay? I don't think it's used very lightly. When terms are defined in the ordinance, we all have an open book. It's an open book test. You guys get to vote on it every year. And I don't think mischaracterization of of things which do not exist is is a fair representation. Your definition of a stream, clearly you can flip to the ordinance is going to say the confluence of two lines on a seven and a half minute series USGS map. I don't think we should be tossing the term around loosely, especially with all the resources handy. If we look at the seven and a half minute series map, it's clear. So the idea that the site has a stream and saying how we're protecting a stream on site and that there's a boardwalk observed during the site visit for a stream, your streams are defined. On this plan on our site, there is no confluence of two blue lines on a seven and a half minute series map. It just doesn't exist. I want to go back through the ordinance. Also, we talk about blasting. The blasting in the ordinance is it's it's interesting on what it says. But here's what the blasting section doing it's. Blasting in the town should be conducted in accordance with all state and federal laws. Applicants from permit permits, improved blasting name, copy of blasters, proof of liability, estimated days and time of blasting. We indemnify the town. We we know we're very familiar with how this blasting criteria came in here. But a blasting plan requirement which isn't called for here, it says applicants who are blasting. This is a contractor. A contractor comes to town and says, we're going to blast. We've seen other applications that say, hey, we need to flatten an area for a boatyard. We need we need to blast. So the submission requirement for blasting operation is all part of an illusion to say, hey, here's our land use ordinance, but you guys know there's a better lane, there's better ordinance out there carried by the state and you guys need to weigh in on this now. It's simply not true. The 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 fact that we haven't addressed erosion, it's glaring. It's in the middle of the plan. I counted fourteen times waiting for this. The idea that the stream certainly isn't 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 factual. I want to go on to say we haven't even addressed the idea that we haven't talked about historical historical issues. I think that the we can find in there, there's a whole section on historical properties in the application. The let me get to there. Historical archaeological research is section T in the narrative, okay? What do you mean? We haven't addressed it. We we researched a comprehensive plan that outlines all the historic sites in town. We've listed all of them relative to our site. We didn't stop there. So the the connotation that we haven't talked about historical, we've just made a statement. It's in the application. It's on the plan. I know there's a lot here, but I think that we haven't done it and that's a reason why we shouldn't be having this review. It's just it's it's not fair because it's here and and everybody has these documents. Cemeteries, we've talked about where the cemetery is relative to the site. National historic places, per the comprehensive plan, we found the comp plan. We went through the historic sites, Bass Harbor Library, the Ruth Moore House. None of those are all two miles away. What else do we do versus historical properties? So we go to the MDOT site. They have an area that if you're going to do a project, you can go. Here's another instance of what we've done for historical properties. We've looked at these things that are in the ordinance. So whether or not they're deep in the in the pile and we want to just only see the things that we can put hot buttons on them, they're here. I know the board has read the application. Lastly, I guess on this issue before I pause momentarily, we're talking about stormwater. There's 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 raised questions on methodologies of stormwater. Whether we've elevated flows to one side or or biased one way, I'm going to go back to the fact that the town hired an independent peer review for for the the project in stormwater. And they and they reviewed, they asked a few questions. We replied to their, we replied to their questions. You guys should have the correspondence from your unbiased peer review for their words exactly. It appears that the applicant's engineer has met the requirements of a land use requirements of all new construction development shall be designed to minimize stormwater runoff in excess of predevelopment conditions. So we can go and say, how would you how would you model this? We can get into the technical details of a coefficient. But I think you guys have plenty of information to say that we've met the standard of your ordinance. Substituting other standards from another jurisdiction isn't your job. We've met with Army Corps. We've met with DEP. We know what's ahead of us. But if we embrace the process, which involves multiple, multiple steps, and we're talking sketch plan, substantive review during completeness, well, two completeness hearings. It's a process. If we were so naive not to think that the process going through town doesn't allow projects to be better, there'd be no need for these steps. There'd be no need for the public hearings. And everybody also knows that when you go through the process such as a state stormwater permit or site law, things get recorded on your on your deed. Things go to the registered deeds. It's very common. And your ordinance allows, it it states in the in the general standards, all licensing for campgrounds should be given conditional upon other licensers with the state. So I don't want to get into the the mismatch of substituting one standard for the other. The town has standards, their own independent review of both traffic and of a stormwater has had a positive result for how we've submitted our application. I'm going to pause there. Andy, I don't know if you have anything to, but I got one more comment regarding, I think, one of the chair's questions about buffering. We talk about the minimum standing being twenty five feet. We note that the it it's twenty five feet, but you also have to consider what we're doing. The five foot berm and a six foot fence is eleven feet. This is talking eleven feet of vegetated barrier in areas where we know from the site visit. We couldn't see other residences. We've also planned the buildings and the low peaks. We've moved any of the accessory activities. You go camping, your kids, they got to have something to do. Everyone splits off and does their thing. We've all been there. Accessory uses on campgrounds as amenities is allowed and and to consider them as principal structures just isn't the case. You can look in the definitions and your 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 accessory structures can never insubordinate your principal use. We don't have more than one use on the property. We have a campground. That's the principal use. All the structures other than the campsites are accessory to that. So I hope that gives you an idea of what I think is information in the package that complies with the ordinance. And we're talking about slopes clearly defined. Evidence where there's nothing of historic evidence. There's there's five pages on historic stuff. And 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 the indication that we haven't respected streams, you guys have a definition of streams. So let's follow what the town has for an ordinance and I'll pause. Thank you.
So thanks, Ken. Greg, would you mind if we give Dan a quick chance to respond to your stuff before moving on to Andy?
I guess we'd like to have our team in in you. Go ahead, Andy.
Why can't we have a complete ability to respond to?
Oh, go ahead then.
Presentation, so.
Go ahead then. I just thought I didn't expect you to respond to engineering stuff. So, okay.
So if you can bring down the screen share, Greg?
Yep.
I'm going to lower my voice and lower the temperature and say, come now, Attorney Pelagi. Let's be fair. You hired two fine consultants, one of whom was a state regulator for longer than he's ever been a private consultant. He knows how to draw upon all the resources of state agencies to support his comments. And you you've got a litany of detail issues. And you've done a good job of using those as an advocacy tool to say that there is a fundamental problem with the project. And then you've taken discreet conversations that you and I have had about the fact that you represent neighbors. And so, of course, I'm going to talk to you, but I don't I didn't expect that concepts where I said we were going to have good public process. Attorneys are not engineers, but we are process engineers. And the process in this case needs some fine tuning. But the one thing I would say is I wouldn't expect that this characterization of dramatic changes to the plan or significant changes to the plan coming would be something that you would feel the need to talk about at this juncture. Because what I'd shared with you is your clients are going to have the opportunity to engage this team. Instead, you can't come in with the pure view that was done by Haley Ward. You set that aside and you instead take the comments of your experts who are hired to support your efforts to advocate against the project. And you said, why shouldn't we think about whether they should have to go comply with state requirements before even the local review is done, which is a totally backwards approach? So from a process engineering perspective, I have to say two things. The process is getting stretched here by this proceeding. And I think we'd do better to come back within a reasonable process. The reasonable process is I've been doing state permitting for thirty five years. And I know that we are not going to proceed with a project if it requires state approvals that won't meet the state approval requirements. But there are several triggers under the Site Location and Development Act. And we either get to design a project that falls within compliance such that it does not require a state approval in a given area, or if we exceed the threshold, we have to get state approval. There's been discussion by you and Attorney Katsifakis of three general statutory frameworks at the state level. The Site Location and Development Act, Stormwater Permitting and NRPA. And the corollary is the section four oh four program of the Clean Water Act that the Army Corps administers. We have a member on our team, Dave Mois, who has been doing wetlands and vernal pool identification for a long time. And I do want Dave to have a chance to respond to comments that your technical colleagues made that we had not done vernal pool assessment in the appropriate season. We had not done any vernal pool assessment and we had not done wetlands. I'd like you to have the opportunity to respond to that, Dave, because I don't think that's accurate. Have you done work out on this property related to vernal pools and wetlands?
Yes, we have. We've done a full well delineation of the of the site. We've also done a vernal pool evaluation and we're in the process. Again, because it is proven, given it's the identification season, which was alluded to earlier. Just to update that, so we have very current data when we go to DEP for any NERPA application that we may need.
Right. And so if we have to do SLOTA permitting, most of the state natural resource permitting, stormwater will all be encompassed within that SLOTA review. Is that fair, Dave?
Yes.
So I I'm not worried that this project, if the trigger slowed up, and it may not, is going to meet requirements of the state. I'm very well familiar with Mark Bergeron, one of his consultant experts because I had to get Mark's approval and blessing on a number of state state permitted projects. So I know Mark knows the requirements and we're going to meet, you you can give Mr. Bergeron assurance, Mr. Pelagi. We're going to meet state law requirements where we need to. What what I've been saying to both the board and to you, I thought discreetly, was we'll have the opportunity to have conversation about those tweaks that may need to be made to the plan to address issues. Did I call them dramatic? Did I call them? Did I call them significant? It's too early to tell. So I I just wanted to offer a process concern that we not get so deep into our advocacy against the project that we start characterizing what the future is going to hold. I do think it's sensible that you had this review. We are going to be coming back to you. We will probably come back to you after we have discussion with the neighbors. Because I'm more comfortable with the attorneys in this project than their presentations might suggest. They had to state their opposition because they're here on behalf of folks who have concerns and their advocacy needs to be shown. But I know these fine attorneys and I think we're going to be able to work with them. I just don't want to have the impression with the board that they can be your peer review agents. Their experts were hired by an attorney who's advocating against the project. So you have to rely on your peer review agents. And they said on traffic and stormwater that Greg Johnston had the right approach. And I can find experts just like attorneys that can disagree over issues. But I I have to say, I'm I am concerned that we have the opportunity to work together. I know things can get adversarial and testy, but I'd I'd rather find ways to collaborate where we can. And that's why I said in response to Attorney Katsefikus's presentation, I agree to the two conditions. No cooking facilities. We don't want dwellings. And I say to the folks who are worried about principal non residential structures, that Greg Johnston and I know that that issue was addressed by this board back in 2019 when a project was reviewed. It'll have to be reviewed again. And any indication that attorneys are giving you tonight that are that are advocating against the project that they know better than the than than the board's attorney and the board, what those terms mean, I just happen to disagree with them. I don't think we've got principal non residential structures. They're designed for residential occupancy. Are they dwellings? No. But we we've got to, we've got to leave this on one side of the standard of what constitutes a dwelling or the other. We've we've agreed that it's the other if there aren't cooking facilities. Now they want to have both sides. And that's why you rely on a board that's fair and you rely on the board's attorney to help with understanding what terms mean. So I just reflect one question back to you, Greg, and say, how have you looked at principal non residential structures, both in the past and currently in this application?
I think that we understand clearly what a campground definition is. Right? You cannot have multiple uses on a lot. You're either this or that. We have identified in all through the application materials, we are a campground use. And under the campground definition, it is campsites, RVs, and other shelters. Cabins are clearly other shelters, particularly with the lack of any containing, the term containing cooking facilities. There's nothing in the ordinance that says you cannot have entertainment amenities for the guests. Look at all the campgrounds in town. So, you know, I think it's a stretch to consider accessory structures to add to the principal density of the property. It's just not how it's constructed.
Okay, is that it? Dan, you want a minute to respond? Or two minutes? You need to be unmuted.
Yeah.
Jesse, Jesse's working on it.
Help of the host.
Thank you. Thank you for the additional time. First of all, I guess the board doesn't need to hear this, but perhaps, Andy, you do. I I haven't talked tonight about anything that you haven't said in front of the the board tonight. I was referring to your comments that you made to the board repeatedly, both during following Jim's presentation and your own. With respect to sedimentation, the T R C report lays out the areas that we believe the the application is deficient. I I know that Greg wanted to talk about other issues relating to sedimentation. But I highlighted or T R C highlighted a number of areas in terms of the the sedimentate protections from sedimentation and erosion that are going to be constructed. And Greg didn't address any of those i- in terms of the construction standards with respect to the architectural and historical significance. Again, in T R C, we noted that an appropriate resource would have been to go to the Maine Historic Preservation Commission and gotten a report from them that to to confirm the absence of of sites requiring protection. I think that meets the standard if if they do that.
All right. Thank you. So are we ready to move on for some public comments or do you gentlemen want to have a little additional time for one way or another?
Um, could I, could I ask a question? Is this an okay time to?
Yeah, sure.
I think this is a question probably for Greg, although maybe maybe for Andy. Just to clarify a little bit more about the principal non residential structure. I I think I'm still a little confused. I'm not sure we have to resolve this in this moment. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of a moment to clarify, like, if there, we know that they're not dwellings. I I think that we've established that. It's clear that a cab is not a dwelling. If it's not a dwelling and it's not a principal non residential structure, sort of then what is it? And and if it doesn't, you know, and if it is a principal non residential structure, then it seems like it would require the 40,000 square feet of lot area. So that's my question. And I'm not sure if either one of you wanted to clarify.
Well, I'll let you start, Greg. I I have thoughts in response to the good question from our colleague, Wilson.
I guess I would, I would go first and say that what is defined as cabins in your ordinance, a group of buildings rented for sleeping purposes by transients. Cabins are defined. And and I also believe that a campground is sleeping facilities for transients. We have cabins. So your term cabins, I think, fits within the definition of a campground. Campground says other shelters. And if you read the definition of campground, it's actually pretty clear. Accommodating two more parties for temporary, i.e. transient living quarters, including but not limited tents, RVs, shelters. We've used the term cabins. Cabins are defined as rented for sleeping purposes by transients. So that doesn't mean you're you're not doing anything else. And it just says that's what cabins are. So it's clear to me that in the definition of a campground, a cabin is a permitted structure under shelters, which fits the definition of cabins.
And how does that affect the lot area standards?
The lot area standard being that under campgrounds, it says per site. You're, you need 5,000 square feet. It's more specific. It's actually a more specific term. You get to your land use ordinance, you have performance standards for structures. But then when you delve into B and Bs, you delve into marinas. This one's very, very specific to campgrounds. We are a campground. We're not claiming to be anything else. Once we identify the use, you're in that use. And within that use of campground, you're allowed those things. And they have more stringent requirements in a campground.
Thanks.
I I think related to that is the concept that in any ordinance, you use the more specific term that governs a particular land use or activity. And the the term campground is the starting point, as Greg said. That breaks it down to include shelters. Shelter is, it is a concept that we've talked about previously with the town. It's it's a term that's used fairly broadly in zoning in Maine. It's the concept that you can get out of the elements and you can shelter. The fact that folks are not permanently residing there. I think there's been some confusion created tonight with the idea that strictly because you've got a structure that it's seasonally occupied is there permanently throughout the course of the year, that somehow becomes a a permanent structure, therefore becomes a principal structure. And there's some confusion in the analysis. You have to start, as Greg said, with what's principal and what's accessory on this property. What's principal is the shelters associated with similar to the tents with with the campground. And I think we need to think about the principal use designation first. Accessory uses can include things that support. For instance, a campfire ring outside the tents or or the yurts or or the or the shelters. The RVs may be accessory in nature. But I think what the ordinance is trying to get at is something much more generic. And that is you're going to have some non residential structures. And you're going to want to apply different dimensional requirements. But again, the specific dimensional requirements and the specific use designation that's applicable here is campground. We do, by the way, get the fact that although we are subject to the reduced area requirement, dimensional requirement, that maybe the overall configuration is not quite right. I I took issue with the characterization, either dramatic or significant, because I don't know. It's not clear to me where we'll settle out in the context of discussion with neighbors and with the board. But we we get that we're going to have to be sensitive to the the setting of this development. And this is the process that gets worked out before boards all the time. In fact, Attorney Pelagi is one of the expert advisors for for boards in the region, because he's very good with applying terms defined in an ordinance. And I I think the reason we've come to agreement so quickly tonight, these are not dwellings, is because the law is pretty well established in these areas for campgrounds. But this principal non residential structure, I think, is associated with, if you will, health buildings associated with a a principal dwelling. Because it's not intended to be residential in nature, storage, you know, a garage. If that's the only use on the on the property, that may be a principal non residential facility. Because sometimes with garages, you have some limited occupancy that's accessory to the main use, you know, the whole concept of and God, how would you like to be a mother in law? It's referred to as the mother in law apartment. I think mothers, mother, mothers in law are grand people. But the the characterization that often gets applied to the limited residential occupancy above a garage, where the garage is the principal dwelling and non residential in nature, it can have some residential component above it. None of that is applicable where we've got a more specific use designation here, campground. And these cabins are equivalent to shelters. And we're, we're happy to have this whole discussion tested, both by you as a board and by the board's attorney. But what we don't want to do is reach a snap judgment tonight where I really do agree with Attorney Pelagi because I think we got lots of time to come to good, considered judgments as to what's what's right for both the applicant and the neighbors in terms of the configuration. And then secondly, I think we got lots of time to 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 think about this use characterization. So I agree with you, Lawson. We're just starting into this discussion. I'd say leave that an open question until you're satisfied.
Thank you, Andy. Lawson, do you have a follow up or anything?
Oh, I'm satisfied. Thanks very much.
Okay, you all set?
Yep.
Jeff? All set?
All set. I think we do need to come back and look at this shelter definition, cabin definition a little closer.
We'll have time to explore that, I think, later on. And here, I'm sure we'll be hearing more from these gentlemen as well.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
The process.
Are we going to the public now?
I I would like to, unless I hear some objections from somebody, why don't we do that? Hearing none? Okay.
Mark, maybe just remind folks of the sort of structure. It's now an hour and a half or maybe more since we first sort of talked about how we were going to do this and I would appreciate a reminder and I've been trying to pay attention. So maybe some people would really need a reminder, so.
Okay, well, we're going to go through a certain order and we're going to start with those folks who received a buttering, a butter's letters. And then we'll go to residents of Tremont and and summer residents of Tremont. And then finally, to people who live out of town. Okay, and we're going to limit their, we are going to put a time limit on these, a two minute limit. Unless somebody really has something interesting to say. I think reading through the letters, I think most people can sum it up within two minutes. And Jesse will do, hold up a card signaling 30 seconds left and then signaling a card saying time's up. I'll hopefully see the cards and I can say 30 seconds left and time's up. So if not, Jesse, wave your arms or something like that. Okay, is that clear? Okay.
And just as a reminder, if you're received in a butter's notice and you would like to say something, please raise your hand and I will call your name and unmute you at that time.
And also one more thing before be sure to identify yourself and please give us your physical address as well. Thank you.
Right. It's like first up is going to be Chris and Molly Goodwin.
Did we get their video on?
She's unmuted.
Molly, can you hear us? Move on to somebody else. We'll come back to them. Maybe they're having some issues.
Okay. Bruce Evans.
Actually, here he's unmuted. Okay.
Hi, that's actually Tony Evans of Bruce and Tony Evans. We reside at for half the year at one Bradbury Lane off of Clark Point Road on Goose Cove. And we've been there. We bought our property in 1995. And while we are you know, in some ways, a campground might be the the best kind of development, we might hope for the scale of this is really beyond anything that we had expected. You know, my develop you, the board has already referred to this as the largest project that has come before you. So how that qualifies as like commercial sort of, you know, that raises a question for me. And it's this, it's the scale of it, you know, looking at the other size of of campgrounds like Quiet Side is 35 and Bass Harbor, I think, I just going from what I found on Google is 130. And you have to go all the way to Smuggler's Den till you get, you know, I think they're somewhere around 115 or something like that. It's just the scale of it is just so out of keeping with the town of Tremont. And, you know, it's a safety consideration. We don't have the police force in in Tremont to respond, you know, what are the safety for emergency response and the traffic? Those roads are terrible. I I run and I bike on those roads and, you know, the increased traffic on that pulling out by Hillcrest Cemetery and then turning left on Tremont Road to try to go, you know, to Seal Cove Road. It's just and and having to face all the traffic that we're gonna see on that road is just, it's frightening. And I hope that you will definitely consider the scale of this project because I think it is way, way beyond what Tremont should have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Jesse, want to try Molly Goodwin again?
Yep.
She doesn't seem to be unmuted from my screen.
Yeah, same here.
No. Go to Cindy Lawson.
Okay, Cindy Lawson.
There we go. Hi, I'm Stephen Lawson. This is Cindy. We live at 66 Kellytown Road. We live right next to the proposed campground. And we have many of the concerns that a lot of our neighbors have, a lot of the concerns that have already been expressed in the letters. But it may be something I want to bring up that I don't know if we've talked about much is is our wells. We all share water. Everything underground is shared. And every summer has been a little drier and a little bit longer, it feels. And to share my, to share our, to share our water resources with with the proposed campground of this size is a huge concern. We all live on ledge here. It's it's all rock. And not, you know, the amount of blasting and the and the the use of the And the uh, the use of the water is is a huge concern to me. I've got huge environmental concerns of. And of course, the the noise, the. The sound, the uh. The smoke. Uh, and and of course runoff, I'm a, I'm a big fisherman. You know, I I'd like to see our L wives, I'd like to see our elders, and I'd like to see our sea run, do a little better. This doesn't uh, doesn't sound good for them either, but. But but I think that maybe not everybody's talking about our wells and how we all share water. Uh, and thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Jesse, who do you want to call on next?
It's like it, uh, the only one with raised hand, it says E. Salvi.
And also Rachel Corman Ramos, I believe. Okay. Hi, uh, could you identify yourself, please?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hi. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Salvi. I'm at thirty-four Prohibition Way in West Tremont with my husband or twenty-one-year-old. Our eight-year-old daughter and our two small dogs. Ten years. Um, and my family and I are strongly opposed to the Acadia Wilderness Lodge application for development. This proposal runs contrary to the town goal of maintaining Tremont as a rural community, supporting small businesses like. Small engine repair garages, pottery studios and the like, not large commercial ventures. There's simply not enough land there for such a large development to not impact our neighbors. Wildlife and the surrounding environment. Our home on Dix Point. Would be negatively impacted in a number of ways. Number one, there would be increased traffic on a narrow and windy road that has many blind intersections. With limited police and first responder presence in West Tremont, I fear. For the safety of me, my family and my neighbors when turning out of Dix Point, if you've ever had to do that. Should there be an accident between my daughter's small car and an RV, for instance. She would lose and help would be long to come. Second concern is increased stormwater runoff into Goose Cove. This environmental hazard could have a catastrophic impact on the ecosystem of the Cove. Which we all love and to diminish the beauty of our coastline. This is especially poignant as severe storms have become commonplace. And the third point is diminished property value.
Thirty seconds, please.
Our home will be directly impacted by light and smoke pollution, increased traffic and noise. And a damaged natural environment. This is not like commercial use of property and will have severe negative ramifications to the very nature of what the town of Tremont is. Please remember the goals we all have for Tremont and do not allow this proposal to go forward.
Thank you very much.
Next would be Rachel.
See. Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, um, I concur with all the things that um my neighbors have said.
Excuse me, uh, we'll start your time after this. Could you say your name and and where you live, please?
Yes. I'm sorry, um, I'm Rachel Corman Ramos. I live at eighteen Kellytown Road. I live um right behind the entrance um of six sixty-one Tremont. So um, I am right. Right behind the entrance, so right where the RVs are supposed to be lined up. I agree with everything everyone else has said. I'm extremely worried about the runoff, um, the traffic. I have an. Seventeen-year-old and a thirteen-year-old daughter. Um, I have a dog. There's a pond right behind my house. I'm extremely worried um about the the pond lines up right with the beginning. Of the uh where the RVs are supposed to be lined up. I'm very worried about, since I've heard nothing about fencing. Although now I'm hearing that. The applicants would like to hear our opinions. And would like to talk to us. Nothing has ever been sent out to us or discussed until now. They're saying that they want to hear from us. I'm, there's been no talk of fencing or anything, so I'm very worried about people wandering into my yard, falling into our pond. Would I be liable for such a thing? I'm worried about um. Light pollution. I RV smoke um going into our yard. I'm worried about blasting. I'm extremely worried about um the loss of property value. I, I'm very worried about um my. My mother work lives down the road. Road, um, and we, she had a medical event. We could not get an ambulance for a very long time. And had to drive her to the hospital, and so I can't imagine sharing our meager ambulance services with. The incredible increase with the amount of people who would come to this gigantic. Event. Um, I I guess I don't really understand why this would. Benefit our community, if only that it would benefit this one family, so I.
Could you, could you sum it up quickly, please?
Yes, the some, I'm very concerned about this. I am extremely opposed to it. And would like to have conversations with these folks, but wish that they had talked to us before proposing it and would like to. Understand how it would make be more safe for us because I'm very worried about all the things that our community. Has already spoken of and um. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next with the raised hand is Sandy.
Sandy, can you, can you hear us?
All right. Just briefly, I agree with.
Please identify yourself, uh, your name and and address, please.
Yes, Samuel Bradbury. I own two properties uh very close to the site. One of them is at uh. Six ninety-eight, the others at seven oh two Tremont Road, so it's right. Down the hill from where this campsite is supposed to be. And apart from all the technical issues discussed, which with most of this meeting has been so far. The introduction of a hundred and fifty-four plus vehicles. Or residents to an area during the summertime is going to be dramatically changing the character of. West Tremont and the village of West Tremont. My family and I have been coming to the that area of West Tremont since nineteen thirty-eight. It's been a long time. And you know, apart from uh the noise and the pollution. You know, the traffic on one oh two is already. A a road which has a thirty mile an hour speed limit. That is largely and thoroughly ignored, so we are right on one oh two in the center of West Tremont. And this is going to create a, is going to create havoc for going through the town, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jesse, did we ever uh? Get Ms. Goodwin? Let's see, she's disappeared.
Yeah. Looks like Sophia. Is next.
We're still. Having a butter's, people that have received a budding notices, a butter's notices.
Oh. I'll wait for the butters.
No, no, we're we're, did you receive an a budding notice?
No, I I live on Kellytown Road. I live halfway. No, I am not.
Okay, okay, you you'll have your opportunity after everybody who received. Butters notice.
Thank you.
That may actually be the case. We don't know yet. Did we have anybody else, Jesse?
Not at the moment.
Okay, well, let's go back to Ms. Brugman then.
Okay, um, I'm Sophia Brugman and I live on the Woodland Road, which is. A small dirt road off of Kellytown Road halfway from either end. So yes, I have fulfilled the negative impact on the traffic, which I've already started to notice a lot with trucks going by and. Great big construction going on. My personal problem is the. Um, the environmental impact that it'll have on all the creatures that live here and all the beings, myself included. Um, there's a pond there and I, it really grieves me that now that will become definitely. Private property and bermed and all of those things, and I know you have to jump through many hoops. Of the state regulations and all the regulations, but it certainly changes the quality of my life and those that live here. That are not speaking up because we live on the quiet side. And the increased traffic, I cannot imagine that on the crinkly road of one oh two with now bicyclers. E-bicyclers, motorcycles and an occasional ATV that zooms by that I turn a blind eye to. When there's huge dump trucks going by, now you're going to head RVs. It's too dangerous, these roads. And so my concern is really the vernal pools that are in there and the negative. Impact it will have on the environment. I would like to hear more about their plan. I was astounded to see how much construction has already happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse, we have, who's next?
I have one that just says home.
Hi, sorry about that. My name's Josh Pearlswig. My wife is Natalie Hamel, uh, and we own uh one oh four and ninety-four Dix Point Road. Neighbors with Elizabeth Salvi who just spoke, so I will say that I um. You know, completely agree with the comments that that she and others have made and to the planning board. Thank you for taking our our written comments. Looking at the land use ordinance article eight permit application review procedures. Uh, permit application review criteria, it doesn't seem that you will be able to make the positive findings. Based on that criteria, especially for part A, we'll maintain safe and healthful conditions. As we've heard a lot about traffic, as we've heard about emergency services, they're already strained. A police force will not be able to come for urgent calls. I'm so glad that uh Steve and Cindy talked about groundwater around the site. The application shows that. In drought conditions with sixty percent of annual rainfall, this development will consume over eighty percent. Of the site's recharge rate. So what can we expect in unpredictable uh severe drought conditions brought on by climate change? If drought conditions were were dropped to fifty percent of annual rainfall. It would be consuming a hundred percent of its recharge rate, and that's if these figures are um accurate, so so groundwater for the neighborhood. Could be severely impacted along with all the other environmental concerns that we've, that other neighbors have raised. Part C of the permit review criteria.
Let me interrupt you for a second. I've lost uh sight of the timekeeper.
You can't see me?
I can see you now, Jesse.
I put up the time card just about the time you said that.
This will be my last quick point.
Okay.
Adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater and how wastewater will impact uh the natural environment. We're talking about. An enormous amount of wastewater, uh, and I don't believe that the uh application. The application lacks the detail that would adequately. For an adequately designed disposal system, so we should be very concerned about the impact of of groundwater.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who are you calling next, Jesse? Stay inside.
Looks like Amy Murphy.
Amy?
Hi, um, Mark. Actually, it's under my name, but my friend is here. She's in a butter. And uh, she would like to speak, Lori Black.
Okay, yes.
Hi, my name is Lori Black. And actually, some of the uh, the, my property abuts some of the property that's going to be to the campground. And um. You know, there's tons of water out there already in that. It's like swampland out there. And whatnot, and I mean, the the road is slim and you've got all kinds of people coming in there. People walk their dogs on there all the time. And it's just not a safe place for people, I mean, to walk children and kids and whatnot, to have all kinds of people there and whatnot. It's really not that safe. It's, the road is curvy. It's, it's just, you know, and I was told that I'm going to have to um. Sign off my back line. I'm not signing nothing off for anybody. So I mean, I I I think the whole thing is crazy. It's not a place for a campground of that size.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Was that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Next we have Judith.
Yes, uh, good evening, Judy Briggs. Um, I live in Southwest Harbor and Miami, Florida. Um, and I just wanted to say that I can't imagine the traffic going through our small town. Of Southwest Harbor that only has a flashing. Yellow light. We already experienced enough traffic issues in Southwest Harbor. Where you're going to find the closest restaurants.
You you're not a Tremont resident?
No, and I I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'll call people from who live in other towns after we're done with Tremont residents. Sorry about that. Thank you.
It's like Bert Edelman.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Bert Edelman and sitting next to me is my wife, Lydia Rogers. Thank you all very much, the planning board and Jesse for this very open. Uh, and complete meeting. Um, our address is nineteen Hodgson Road, Tremont. Uh, we come and go all year. Our ties to MBI are extensive. I worked at the Jackson Lab as a college student. We've been coming to the islands, the family for almost forty years, and we've owned the home on Hudson Road for the last twenty years. We care greatly about our town. About the community, its preservation, its future and the welfare of all its citizens. The Acadia Wilderness Lodge Campground Site Plan should be denied by the planning board. The proposed campground is a huge commercial enterprise that would have meaningful negative impacts to the site, the neighborhood and the larger community. The site plans shows it is simply too big for the forty-two-point-seven acre lot. Together, the RVs, cabins, tent sites and seven additional structures, the roads, parking spaces all exceed in total. The land use ordinance minimum standards. The estimate of the number of parking spaces needed is also probably too low. The TRC Engineering Report cites important engineering details. That are insufficient and are missing in the current plan proposal. The impacts to the natural communities, especially wetlands, have not been adequately evaluated. The completed construction as proposed requires further state and federal permitting, as well as town permitting for blasting. The traffic estimates, we believe, are underestimated and inaccurate because they are not based on actual measurements. During the camping season and at times when they would be the highest. The applicant's first engineering report noted. That to meet the wastewater needs pre-treatment would be required, but no more details have been told to us. Residents of Tremont have experienced. Much experience based on the understanding of how difficult um some of the issues are for us. In particular. We are concerned about one oh two, which we all agree is a dangerous road. We know that historic estimates about stormwater runoff are not adequate to plan for the kinds of storms we frequently now see. Because of global climate change. We know how limited police protection, fire control and ambulance service is in Tremont. We appreciate that the devil is in the details. The application is simply incomplete at best. And we thank you for this opportunity to make these comments.
Thank you, sir. Jesse, I once again, I don't see you. Is there a way we can keep you on the screen?
I believe Lawson said you can drag my picture up to the top.
Uh, no, uh, Jesse, raise your hand. If you raise your hand. Um, it's, it's, the people who raise their hands are gonna, they're gonna sort of bump you down to the bottom. And we can't rearrange. The tiles while people's hands are raised, which is sort of the point of the pen raising is that we're looking at the people that are in the queue. That might help a little bit, um, Mark. Other than that, you might just have to keep scrolling.
Let me raise mine as the host.
Oh, yeah, maybe you can.
The advice Lawson.
All right, next up is um Julia.
So we're still on Tremont residents, uh, for everybody's information.
Hi, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Drew Lekardoso and this is my partner, Josh Kane. We own the abutting property on eighteen Webster Lane. In West Tremont.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to put my face out there to the community and say that I'm in opposition. And there's a whole lot of legal ramifications, as the attorneys have said tonight, but. For me, it's just, you know, what constitutes light duty? You know, that's not a, it's not a small venture and I don't think that uh. That it it passes a straight face test for that, and um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
And I also wanted to add and reiterate some of the concerns that people have raised about the environment. And I also wanted to add and reiterate some of the concerns that people have raised about the environmental impact of this. We have obviously walked our land extensively. And there is very significant wetland cover. We've been able to walk the property line and we can see that that wetland extends beyond our property line. So we're, wetlands, as we know, are very delicate and vulnerable environments. So we're very concerned about the impact that such a big number of people could have on this ecosystem. We have a stream that crosses our property that I believe also crosses, or at least is connected through other streams to the campground property. So we're also concerned about the health of the stream ecology. And that stream ends up in Goose Cove. So whatever flows through that stream ends up in our ocean waters. And since we're both commercial fishermen, we're very concerned about the health of those ocean waters and the health of the clam flats, the health of the ocean ecosystem that, again, as someone else has mentioned, could really be heavily affected by the increased number of people, the increased runoff, the increased pollution, and all of the other concerns that have been raised. So.
Thank you. I'm gonna guess your time is up, even though I do not.
Yeah, I just saw the 30 second card. So thanks for letting us share our comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Jesse, where'd you go?
Right here. All right.
It's not working out very well, is it?
Looks like Elizabeth Edwin is next.
Elizabeth? I think it's Ed in Elizabeth.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. I also want to I like to voice my opposition. My name is Edwin Davis. I've lived on Kellytown Road for over 50 years. And I've watched the town grow and it's getting growing pains at this point. Traffic is getting a little too heavy for our little road. I'm also very concerned about pollution. And this campground is gonna pollute, and nobody's really talked about the pollution. If half of those people have a campfire, you're not gonna be able to breathe at night. And that's a real concern because the prevailing wind is gonna take it to my house and all of our neighbors' houses. I'm also concerned about groundwater. We have a well and we're on ledge and they're all interconnected. When one well gets drilled, sometimes the other one goes dry. This is gonna take a lot of water. I'm concerned about that for myself and my neighbors. And I'm also concerned about pollution of Goose Cove. It's all downstream. It's all downhill into Goose Cove. And it's not gonna be good because all of that pollution has to go somewhere eventually, and I think Goose Cove is gonna be the end place where it's gonna end. So I don't think, I think this whole thing is too big for this area. There's not enough space. It's a little small town full of residents and it should stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add on to that, that there are approximately, I think, 36 of Butters, if you look at the, the map there. And that's within the 500 feet, and then roughly another 65 people within less than two tenths of a mile from it. So it's hardly a wilderness and hardly can absorb what a huge campground development is going to do to affect the area.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looks like next up is Gabrielle.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Graham. I live 15 Miles Road in Seal Cove. And in addition to environmental concerns and noise and all of the things that have been mentioned so far, I am the only one to have spoken so far who actually owns an RV and has experience with an RV. And driving an RV on these little potholed, narrow, non-shouldered roads, when you're an experienced RV driver, let alone someone that's just rented one for a week, it's very difficult. That's number one, the roads are inadequate. Number two, I don't, I haven't read the details of the RV proposals, but if, if it's not dry camping, I don't know, I don't know how that's being handled because the emptying the gray and black water tanks in an RV requires considerable amount of plumbing and odor control and things like that. Lastly, as far as the RVs go, if there are generators, which, which all RVs have nowadays, and people are quite used to using them for their microwaves or their television or whatever else, those generators make noise and that will be, become unbearable for the neighbors and there's an unreasonable noise level beyond just human noise and children playing and such. It's mechanical noise that is just not appropriate for this neighborhood setting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ellie Andrews is next.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Ellie Andrews and I live at 150 Clark Point Road in West Tremont. My family has been coming to this island for about the past 130 years. This is home. We chose to live in this part of the island because of its rural aspect. We bought our house in 2000 and have been living here on the island full-time since 2006. I have a full-time job as director of the Northeast Harbor Library and commute Monday to Friday, back and forth. And over the years, I've noticed an increase in traffic, particularly in summer. When I come out of the northern end of Clark Point Road and make a left onto Tremont, there is a rise in the road by the Hillcrest Cemetery, making it very difficult to see and who is coming. And people speed along 102 and I can't imagine having to contend with 154 more vehicles at this time of year. It's dangerous. This is, as many people have said, it's a country road with no sidewalks, a soft shoulder, many potholes. There's no police or fire protection present. This project is so large in scope that at the site visit, we were only able to see a third of the site. And, but what I did see was many wetlands and hundreds of downed trees. I'm very concerned about the sewage removal and what everybody else has talked about, the impact on the environment, and also very concerned about the potential use of pesticides that will cause drift to surrounding properties.
30 seconds, please.
That it'll be part of the runoff. And no one has mentioned that we are in the middle of a pandemic and why do we need construction workers and more tourists spreading COVID? Please, this project is a very idea, very bad idea on countless levels. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Seraphina.
She's not unmuted.
She's still muted. Here she is. Oh, she was unmuted. Have patience, Sarah.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we'll try again. I'm Seraphina. I'm representing my boyfriend, Michael Luck, as well. We own 16 and 18 Carver Road, which is across from, I believe, the south end of Kellytown Road. We're year-round residents. We love bike riding. We live here on what was referred to earlier as the backside. We like to call it the quiet side. And that's why we live here. We love bike riding and right now what we have to do is typically cross 102 over to Kellytown, cross 102 again to Clark Point Road and double back just to avoid bike riding on Route 102. You all know how dangerous it is and we've already had casualties, you know, over the last couple of years. So it actually scares me to even think about bike riding with large RVs passing. Somebody talked earlier about outdoor cooking. That presents a fire hazard. Not to mention, you know, the emergency response. So it's just, you know, I hope we, we can do the right thing here.
Thank you very much. Who's next, Jesse?
Rick and Debbie.
Rick and Debbie. You're unmuted. Can you hear us?
Sure. This is Rick Smith. I'm not sure you can see me.
No, we can.
Okay, it's Rick Smith. I live on 60 Latty Cove Road in West Tremont. I have known the Hopkins most of my life. I know them to be very good people who only want the best for this side of the island. And I know they would only do what they believe would be good for the culture of, of this side. However, I have major concerns about, about the campground itself. Some of which would be, part of it would be light pollution and noise pollution from anything that would be going on from there. Also, 102 is just too crowded as it is. It's too dangerous to ride a bike, as Ellie just said. And it's, so my concern is that we're not quite ready for it. And this town, of course, has, has no police. It's very, very scary. It's tough enough as it is. Now, being one of the, one of the largest taxpayers in Tremont, I have great concern about how we spend our funds. And I don't know how we could in, in, enhance the law enforcement with that many more people coming on to this part of the island. I don't know how we could afford to do that. So my concern is, how do we make this still remain the quiet side? And yet I know that the Hopkins, and certainly I can think of Ed Davis. No one knows the area in the Cove better than Ed Davis and his family. And how they, how they would work. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Keep going. You have 30 seconds.
Thank you so much for having this, this meeting tonight. It's been very helpful. And it's very important for how we conduct ourselves as a town and as a nation to have public participation. So mainly, I want to thank folks for being here. It's been very good comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you much for the planning board.
Looks like next is Mila. Mila, sorry, I forgot your name wrong.
Wait, you're unmuted.
No, she's not unmuted.
Yeah, now, now you're unmuted now. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Maila Rockefeller. I live on Cape Road in Seal Cove. And I'm also here with another resident, Pammy Manis, and I will ask, if I may, two questions for the owners and then turn it over to Pammy. I have, my two, my first question deals with asking the owners to make a clear and unequivocal statement as to the seasonal use of the campground. I have heard them and their attorney say that the occupancy would be only seasonal, but I've also seen plans for winter activities up to and including a Santa's workshop. So I would love to hear a clear statement as to what their anticipated seasonal use is. My second question is a little more complicated. I have heard the applicant's attorney talk about how long this process is likely to be, additional permits that are going to be needed, additional review processes. I also heard members of the board talk about the fact that the zoning for campgrounds is changing and there's draft legislation coming along the pipeline. I've also heard you mention that there is a possibility of an overall review of the land use and zoning ordinance in Tremont. My second question is, would the owners contemplate withdrawing their application until such time as to either one or both of those ordinance changes have been made? Now, I'd like to turn you over to Pammy, if I may.
Hello, my name is Pamela Manis and I live on the Cape Road. I agree with all the comments that have been made previously about the effect, the impact on groundwater, on wetlands. I, 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 I wrote a letter. I just strongly feel that the environmental impact should be really evaluated. The fact that we have no police is huge. And I would like to know who would be surveilling if this campground were to go into effect? Would the code enforcement officer have to triple his forces to be able to find out whether, for instance, a camper is staying year-round? If the camper's staying year-round, does that qualify as a dwelling? If they stay for 10 years, does that qualify as a dwelling? I also would like to know if any of the cabins will have chimneys? And would gas stoves be allowed to cook using those chimneys? Then that would, would that qualify as a kitchen? And finally, if, if we're looking at the bodily needs of how waste is disposed of, where would people get the food to make that waste? I mean, where, where are they gonna be eating? They have to have food to make waste. And I really think that the town needs to consider that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, how do you want to handle letting that attorney or Greg answer that? Do you want to do that at the end or?
That's something I didn't expect. If they would like to respond to Ms. Rockefeller's questions briefly, I will allow them that time. If Andy's still here, there he is. Hi, Andy.
You have to unmute him.
He's still muted.
So, Mr. Chairman, given the good flow of public comments, I didn't want to disrupt it with an answer right now. I thought you might signal when you're done for the evening and maybe we offer a thought to, to wrap up.
Okay, fine.
Thanks.
Bye. Thought we'd give you the opportunity anyway.
Next up is Lydia Wegman.
Lydia, there she is. Okay. Okay, you're unmuted now.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name's Lydia Wegman and my husband, Robert Cantwell, is here with me. We own a house at 166 Clark Point Road. And we are, we spend much of the summer and fall on Clark Point Road and our taxpayers to Tremont. We share all of the concerns that have been stated by those in opposition and we are in opposition to this application for the campground. I'll just note a couple of things or emphasize a couple of things that have been said. One is pollution. I used to work for the Environmental Protection Agency on air quality issues. And I am very concerned about the amount of smoke that will be generated by this campground from campsites and other activities where fire may be involved. I also share the concern related to noise. I think there is a danger for a great deal of noise pollution coming from the generators and also just from the vehicles moving on and off the campground and on our roads. And the third thing I will mention is everyone else has, or almost everyone, is traffic. I'm concerned about the turn that was discussed going from the north end of Clark Point Road onto the Tremont Road, but also the turn coming off the Tremont Road going onto the Clark Point Road because that is also a dangerous turn because of the hill and the difficulty of seeing vehicles coming down the hill. Oh, no, one other concern, which is children. Lots of people have kids, grandkids, we certainly do, come up there. They walk around in the roads, they bike around on the roads. The roads are already, as has been said, dangerous. The idea of having so many more vehicles on those roads is extremely worrisome to me. And, and also the security factor that has been talked about, the, the police, the, the very. And, and also the security factor that has been talked about, the, the police, the, the very limited police resources we have right now. So those are my concerns. And I don't know, do you want to add any?
I'll just add that I think the light commercial activity is, is simply not like, like commercial by, by any standard. And is completely incompatible with the spirit of place in, in West Tremont. For all the reasons our neighbors have already cited so, so eloquently, I might add.
And we, we thank you for taking our comments.
Thank you very much. Board members, let's pause here for a second. It's getting to be about eight fifteen. I don't think we're going to get through this all tonight. And it's getting late and we still have a little bit more of a meeting to to go through. So my question is, do you want to call a time at certain, at a certain time? Call tonight at a certain time for the public hearing and, and continue it to a later date?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lawson, I, I didn't understand you, Lawson.
Oh, I just said, yeah. But yes, I agree that we should at some point just sort of pause the public hearing and pick it up at a future, future date.
Okay, and Brett, your feelings?
Yeah, we've been here like, what, three hours now?
Yeah. Yeah. You want to go ten more minutes or so? Or do you want to just call tonight right now?
I don't think you're going ten minutes. It, because I think, I mean, there are at least three hands raised right now and for people who
Okay.
have something that they're excited about sharing, I'd like to give them a moment, but also to let people know that if you haven't raised your hand yet, tonight's not your last chance.
Thanks, Lawson. I couldn't have said it better myself. Okay, let's call a few more. There, the hands that are raised and then we'll move on. Jesse?
Andy, did you have something you needed to say or you also?
I think, I, I think I join in the board's sense that we ought to continue to a future meeting, the public hearing. And I do think our group wants the opportunity to have an interim neighborhood meeting that we would bring to neighbors concepts and, and then report back at the next meeting how we respond to the public comments. But if folks want to be heard, I don't want to stand in the way of that.
Andy, if you're going to do that, that could affect when we reschedule or the resumption of the public hearing, correct?
That, that's correct. We may, we, we may need a little bit more time than the May eleventh meeting. And so what we want to do is keep the cadence of meeting with the planning board, but do it sensibly when it makes sense for both the board and the applicant to get back together again.
Okay. Yep. We can talk about that after we hear from all these other people. Thank you.
Okay, I have two people. I see the two hands raised, but before I forget, I have two people in the chat that couldn't raise their hand. So I will do those two now. The first one is just listed as owner currently.
Hi. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Identify yourself.
So, yes, I am Molly Goodwin of Kristen Molly Goodwin of one 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 Kelly Town Road in Tremont. And I was the first person to raise my hand, but one of the last to be heard, which brings my first point. I've been lobbying Jesse incessantly to have an in-person option for these meetings. Because at the beginning of this meeting, it sounds like there will be more meetings. I will again lobby publicly that we should provide an in-person option. There are people who don't have access to computers, who don't have access to mobile devices, to sit in the parking lot at the Bass Harbor Library to attend these meetings. And as is evidenced by my experience tonight, I was unable to speak when I wanted to speak and was given the opportunity, et cetera, et cetera. I think we all understand technology is imperfect. Other public meetings have offered a public option. I, it's, it's not impossible for us to achieve. That's my plug number one. But I do have two specific questions. One is specific to a planning board member perhaps, or to Jesse. I'm wondering if there is an existing definition of light commercial activity? Or if there are standards and precedents in Tremont that we can kind of frame that language? My second question is perhaps for Attorney O'Connell. And I'm wondering, can the town delay the approval of this application pending the comprehensive plan, the completion of the comprehensive plan? Is that a possibility? Those are my two questions and my plug for an in-person option. Thank you.
I, I can answer those questions. The comprehensive plan is won't be completed until more than a year from now. And this application is already in the works. There's no way we can delay. It, it's already going on. What was the other question? Oh, about a definition of light commercial. No, we do not have a definition for light commercial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we could delay if the applicant would agree to it.
Till after the comprehensive plan is complete?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so. What do you think the chances are of them doing that?
Well, he speaks a lot of good spirit and so forth and want to work with the community.
I think, I think Andy just gave a signal, a signal that zero chance of them doing that.
Okay, then I can now take the rest of the comments. Thank you.
Who else do we have?
Right. Go on to Nicole.
Thank you, Jesse. Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, my name's Nicole Cardano. I live at twenty-one Butler's Ledge in West Tremont. This is family-owned land. I have lived here since nineteen ninety-three, but the land in our family goes back generations. The memorial trail is named after my stepfather Alfred Butler across from the town office. I agree with the concerns stated by my neighbors. I'm very happy to be joined with them right now and I am in opposition of this application. I have lots of concerns. The one that hits the hardest is the roads. I have a fourteen-year-old daughter in our school system at Tremont School. And the roads aren't safe. I already, when I step out from Butler's Ledge, if I ever put my foot on the main road, which I often do to try to go to Dex Point Road, I pause and I listen because I can't see the cars. In order to take a left-hand turn from Butler's Ledge, I roll down my window and turn down the music to listen because I can't see the cars. My daughter has a friend that lives at the entrance of Kelly Town Road, just on what would be the opposite side of the entrance to the campground. They won't be able to walk to each other's houses safely. It's her closest neighbor and her closest friend. I think this heavily impacts our community and what we value as our community. I'm just gonna make sure I didn't miss. I mean, I'm, I'm very concerned with fire safety. I mean, if something does happen, we're all here and we are the property's closest. I also agree with the statements on that these roads are not equipped to be driving RVs, especially that many RVs and especially people that are not from this area and don't already know how tricky these roads are and are of course going to be biking.
Thirty seconds, Nicole.
I, I fear casualties greatly. Um, I thank you for this time and that's my statement for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. We have what, one more?
Like one more Shelby White.
Hi. Let's see. Oh, how do I do this? Okay, I'm Shelby White. I live at one sixty-four Clark Point Road. I am a seasonal resident and in the interest of everybody being able to go home tonight or at least get off the Zoom, I'm going to say that I pretty much echo my neighbor Lydia Wegman who spoke just a few minutes ago. And I want to just say that this campground does not align with the long-term goals or the needs of the people who live here. And I hope that this application will be denied. And for all the reasons you all heard from everybody else tonight. So thank you for the opportunity to say my piece and.
Thank you very much and I appreciate you being brief. Okay. Well, we're gonna give Andy's a chance to, a chance to respond to those questions, correct?
So, you did, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this as a matter of process as opposed to trying to address the wide arc of the public comments. Because I don't know that I could do justice to all of the considerations and concerns that have been stated. As a matter of process, what this applicant team is prepared to do is roll up our sleeves and get to work on the next phase of trying to address as many of the concerns and considerations as we've heard. And there were a number of them. So we want to get to a neighborhood meeting. I would like to have some coordination with the town office so that we pick a venue that they think is sensible. It would probably put the planning board members in jeopardy if they were to attend. So I don't want to suggest that you're disinvited, but it would probably be better from the perspective of any concerns about bias down the road. Not to have board members there and have the open opportunity with the neighbors to see if some ideas that we would like to try might be helpful in addressing some of the concerns. I don't think we're going to be a hundred percent successful. You can't please all the people all the time, but maybe we can please many with the fact that we're at least thoughtful as a matter of process. And so three things. One is, I thank the chairman for the review. I, I appreciate that I was a little bit firm on some points. You were respectful and courteous in the way you responded. I appreciate that. Second, these two applicants really put themselves forward this evening. I, we felt they needed to, to let the community know that they're people and they're people that want to be part of this community. How we go from here now will show our character. And I think you'll see good character. I will say that my experience working with Cindy Orchid, who's a member of our team, is very helpful. She is a landscape architect. She has background in some of the important principles about how this project could work. I've heard both Kenya and James say that they're open to the possibilities in terms of configuration. I don't think we're open to the idea that we're going to either do away with this project or so substantially reduce it, whether dramatic or significant, that it doesn't meet the business plan requirements. And so I think because this is a family development, you're gonna see the family participating in some dialogue. And I, I appreciate their courage and their respect for their neighbors. It, it takes quite a bit to put yourself out there the way they have been. But I know with Cindy and with Greg Johnston, they're gonna listen well to the community. And we just wanted to say thank you to the board for giving everyone the chance to speak and to be heard. And I, I think we got through this rather well. It was, you know, a little bit rocky, but what proceedings aren't. So I, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, you and your colleagues did a fine job this evening and we look for a fair review when we come back. And I think we would look to work between Greg and Jesse to try to schedule when we come back next, because I think the eleventh is too soon. If this is going to be meaningful, it needs to be a substantive exercise between meetings. And so to be substantive, it'll take a bit of time. So those would be our thoughts at this point. I don't know if any member of our team wanted to say more. Greg, in particular, Kenya or James, up, up to you, or Cindy. Because I just want to be clear on our process going forward. So Cindy, if you had some thoughts, that might.
Andy, hold on. Were you going to answer Ms. Rockefeller's questions?
I, I think those questions are difficult to answer because they contain predicates that we can't predict. And so I'd rather do things that the applicant can reliably commit to. And I just, I, I understand the thrust of her questions, but I'm not sure we can commit to a, a process that is not predictable from our perspective. We've got, we've got too much in terms of business plan and financial considerations at risk to do something like wait until the comprehensive plan is completed, wait for something to happen at the state level or to be wholly tied to state permitting. We're going to instead make sure we configure and design the project so that it will meet state requirements. And you can believe that Greg Johnston, who talks with colleagues at the state agencies all the time, is going to work on the design aspects. And yeah, there'll be some changes. And we can bring it back. But I hope that's responsive because I don't think I can say yes, a flat yes in response to the questions that were asked.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
Given the fact we gave you a chance to have a, a statement at the end here, I'm gonna give, offer that opportunity to Mr. Katsafikas and Dan Pelagi, if they're still around. Okay, I don't hear anything.
Well, did you see that Cindy had her hand raised too?
Pardon?
Cindy, Cindy Orchid had her hand raised.
And, and Jim raised his hand as well. He's, he's.
Okay. Cindy, I guess, first.
Yes. Um, well, I just wanted to say that I look, look forward to working with all of you, however many of you would like to participate in revisiting this plan. I have read every single letter, the over hundred letters that were submitted, took notes then. I've taken notes this evening. And I want to say that I think the letters were incredibly well-written. They were thoughtful, respectful. I know there are a lot of issues and concerns and I feel confident that we can address many of them. Probably not all of them because that would mean basically don't build a campground. But we are, we are hoping that we can address many of the issues that have been raised. And I just want to thank all of you for taking the time to write the letter and also for sitting in front of your computer screen for three hours tonight and very patiently and kindly telling us your thoughts. So I look forward to working with you soon.
Thank you. Jim?
On behalf of the abutters, just to sum up, we, we appreciate the patience shown by the board and by the thoroughness of your questions. We will stand ready to try to answer those and, and respond as, as this goes forward. And look forward to working with you in the process again for, for a fair and full public participation in, in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Hi, finally, Mark, because you called on me, I just wanted to say that I, I have nothing to add other than to thank the board for its patience tonight.
Okay, I saw your hand was raised, so.
But I thought you wanted to say something. I didn't want you to think I abandoned you.
Oh, we would never think that, Dan. Okay, thanks, folks. We'll call the public hearing. It's getting late, obviously, right?
We'll go out of public hearing. We'll call it ending for now. Eight thirty-two.
I think, I think we should make it clear that aren't we adjourning it? We're not ending?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Yeah, I was thinking, we're adjourning, adjourning the, the meeting and to be resumed at a public hearing and be resumed at some later date as yet to be determined. I'll take the motion to that effect.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to second on the table to adjourn the meeting and resume it at some, at some later date to be determined. I should say public hearing, not a meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Okay. We still have old business and some new business. Well, old business, we're gonna table. And I suggest we also table the new business. And I'll take motions to that effect individually, please. And maybe, but before we do that, our next scheduled meeting is May twenty-fifth. We can also hold a meeting on May eleventh. We didn't schedule that because we were unsure when the town meeting was going to be. So we don't know when the public hearing is going to resume, though it would be good to know have some idea. But I guess that's not gonna happen. So do we want to, yes?
I think Andy said they needed more time than the eleven. And, and he's fine.
Well, I'm wondering if the twenty-fifth is good for them.
Well, I, I, I don't want to go to Andy's needs yet. Let's go to the two applications we have before us and move those to the eleventh. And, and as our items on agenda.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
And is it, I mean, procedurally, is it okay to essentially ask the Okay, Wilderness Lodge applicant, like, when they're ready to then reach out to Jesse to sort of ask to be on a future, you know, to schedule a public, you know, start to, to get on our, our, our agenda in the future? And we can leave it sort of flexible like that or do we need to pick a date now?
If you, um, if you don't pick a date now, then we just need to, um, meet the advertising requirements when we do pick a date.
Could, could I pose a question through the chair to, uh, both the applicant team and the board and Jesse? And that is, um, the twenty-fifth might be a good suggestion because I agree with what Jesse just said. It's easier for a board and an applicant to continue to date certain than to leave it way up in the air. And so I'm thinking, maybe we continue until the twenty-fifth of May. And then if we need further time, we could always seek a further extension. But I think it's better to save the twenty-fifth of May. But what does the applicant team think? Greg Johnston, I, uh, if you're still on, I'd, I'd ask you if, if that's a possibility, the twenty-fifth of May.
I think, um, is that a Tuesday? I haven't looked at the calendar.
Yeah, it'll be a Tuesday.
Tuesday? Um, I think it's good for a date certain. Um, I think we'll have to work around the peripherals, including the space. Um, I don't have, particularly have an issue right now of the twenty-fifth. Um, but I think we have some logistics to work out between now and then.
Good, then let's, let's suggest that, Mr. Chairman.
I, I prefer having a date certain rather than leaving it open.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I'll take a motion to, uh, reschedule or...
I'll make a motion to schedule or to, to continue the public hearing for the Kedon Wilderness Lodge on May twenty-fifth.
And, and we need to set a...
Do you set a time? And a location, like, at five o'clock via Zoom, because that's the way we did it tonight?
I, I know there are some people who feel that we should hold it in person, but considering the number of people interested in attending and some can attend and the fact that we are in, still in the middle of a pandemic, I think the safer thing is to hold it by Zoom. I don't like Zoom meeting, but we have to do what's, has to be done. Any board?
And I will, I will restate my motion, which is to, that we continue the public hearing on May twenty-fifth at five o'clock via Zoom.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the table to continue the public hearing until May, on May twenty-fifth at five o'clock by Zoom. Any discussion?
And I'll just, uh, use this discussion moment to point out that the planning board really appreciates the letters, um, from the community. And if you're not able to attend Zoom by any reason, we are reading your letters and we take those into consideration. That's a great way to participate in the process.
Good point, Lawson. Thank you. Anybody have any objections to Zoom from the board members? Hearing none, okay. I'll take, uh, uh, all in favor. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, we got that set. Now, we want to table the new business and, uh, consider it on the eleventh. If so, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. Yes, I'll move. Do you need to, you want me to say?
Well, why don't you say specifically what they are? Do you have the agenda?
I'll take a motion to, um, table the planning board application for the Silco Auto Museum. Can I do them at the same time?
Yeah.
And the planning board application, um, and site plan review for Pointy Head Ca- uh, campground. Yeah, that's the, those are the two things, uh, to table those things and resume or until our May eleventh meeting.
The May eleventh and want to set a time. Uh, our normal of six o'clock?
We do six o'clock via Zoom on, on the eleventh.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second on the table to, uh, uh, table, uh, these two items and, uh, reschedule them for, uh, May eleventh, six o'clock by Zoom. All in favor, Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
And you have?
Hey, actually, you can vote on those. I forgot. Sorry, Marjorie. I'm, uh, I'm assuming, oh, no, you can't. One is Pointy Head. You have to accuse yourself on that as well, so.
Oh, I meant the auto museum.
Anyway, uh, I'll take, uh, no CEO, uh, no CEO issues, Jesse? Nothing else you want to say? Okay.
No.
Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, folks, for bearing with us tonight. I know we had some technical glitches and, uh, I think, uh, we got things straightened out and appreciate all the comments. Uh, good night, everybody.
Thank you.